All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Call this meeting to order at 7:01. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the first place.
Okay, if we're ready for roll call, Mr. Ryan?
Present.
Mr. Parry?
Present.
Mrs. McHugh? Mr. Cook?
Present.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Here.
Mrs. Bobsey?
Present.
And Mrs. Durst?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have adoption or amendment of agenda.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda? I don't have anything. Then I make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Support?
Support. Was that, uh, supported by O'Connor?
Audrey, sorry. Yes.
All right, uh, we have a motion by McHugh, supported by O'Connor, to adopt amendment agenda for April 27th, the regular board meeting as presented. All those in favor say, or, sorry, we're gonna do a roll call vote?
Okay, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Parry?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
Um, we've on the website, there were instructions on this notice of teleconference board meeting, um, that indicated, um, that we're gonna meet via teleconference and that, um, we're gonna ask to register intention to speak, um, by providing name and last two digits of the phone number so we can, um, identify you when we get to the public comment. So at this time, is there anyone wishing, uh, to make public comment, um, when we get to that section in the agenda?
I would like to make registration, register, register for public comments, please.
Okay, and who is this?
Kathleen Coretich. I'm with the MEA, and the last two digits of my phone number are 1-1. I would also like to register for the public comment.
Okay, and who is this?
Uh, Sarah Bruey. And the last two digits of my phone number are 2-7.
Okay. I'll wait, uh, one more minute here if you need to, to get your phone unmuted to state that you would like to make public comment later in the meeting. Okay, so we have two making public comment this evening, and, um, we have you registered. Next up, we have the consent agenda.
Okay. Under the consent agenda this evening, you're approving the minutes from the regular meeting on March 23rd, 2020 as presented. You're also approving bill, fund bills in the amount of $184,887.22, and AP payroll checks in the amount of $17,344.64, for a total of $28,231.86. Check numbers 65021 through 65085, and ACH transfers in the amount of $455,855.86, for a total of $658,087.72, and check number 64930 and 64967, voided and no additional bills.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do we have support?
Support.
Was that Mr. Parry?
Yes.
Okay. We have motion by Mr. Cook, supported by Mr. Parry, to approve the items under the consent agenda as presented. We'll take a roll call vote.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Parry?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Durst?
Okay, next up, um, we have reports. Item seven, um, within there, we've got the food service report and the general fund report, so I'm not sure all who's online if, um, you would like to summarize your reports. Uh, we'll start with, um, do we have Mr. Oki on the line tonight? Okay, do we have, um... Mr. Walsh?
Yep, can you hear me, Dave?
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, yes, so, uh, um, just been, Brian was able to set me up working from home, um, which is, which has been a really good thing, been able to keep on top and be able to, um, attend quite a few webinars, still been able to attend our, um, Business Manager Academy courses, which has been a, a very, uh, resourceful tool that we've, that I've had access to, that we were meeting virtually at this point, and, and that's been a really good thing to bounce ideas off and kinda see where other people are at. Uh, obviously, everybody's kind of in the same position right now, it's just been a, a good thing to be able to talk through with a lot of my colleagues and, and things like that. Um, obviously, the MSBO Annual Conference was canceled for this year. Uh, at this point, basically with approving the A2 budget at the last meeting, starting to look at A3 budget adjustments right now. Um, there's so much turmoil right now that, just trying to kinda keep it at top of mind and, and keep up with everything that's going on at the state level and at the federal level and seeing how that's gonna, kinda trickle down and affect all districts, so, communicating with Brad, um, oftentimes throughout the week and just trying to stay abreast of everything that's coming up, all new information, and continue to work on A3 budgets, so we've got an accurate outlook so we can prepare and plan for next year.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Walsh on the board?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to Mrs. Hankins.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We hear ya.
Oh, awesome, thank you. So, um, I guess the first thing I'd like to report is just how absolutely and utterly impressed I am with, um, our teaching staff. Our teachers have, um, been so incredibly brave and asked to do some things that they've never had to do before, and they have really, um, taken the bull by the horns, if you will, and just have run with this, and they're doing some really, really incredible things for our families, and, um, they really deserve kudos and praise for how smoothly everything's, um, going at the elementary school. I've been impressed with their determination every single day, um, so I would definitely like to just start off by giving them the praise that they deserve. Um, secondly, I've been hosting virtual coffee with the principals, um, just to kinda answer questions and head off any sorts of concerns or comments that parents may have and get their feedback as we go along. Um, I've had about 50 people on average attend each time, and they've been really insightful to us. Um, they've, parents have been super supportive and have given some great feedback throughout the process, and, um, we look forward to continuing partnering with our parents because this is as big of an adjustment for them as it is for us. Um, other than that, we've just kinda been working to keep in touch with all of our families and maybe start looking at next year, how that's gonna go.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Hankins? Comments?
Hey, Susan. Go ahead. Susan, sorry, this is Chris. Have the teachers, professors, anything they need help on to, to get information to students and to start getting them engaged? Is there anything we can do to help them?
Thank you for asking that, Chris. What we've been, um, troubleshooting most often with teachers is just kind of technical support. Um, our teachers range, um, in understanding technology from, they could run the show with Brian to we're still learning how to, um, save a folder or save a document in the Google Drive. So, um, Brian has been wonderful, and, um, him and I have been creating videos of tech support for the teachers and just kinda having Google meets with them and, um, creating videos and supporting them the best we can. That's been our biggest, um, not even a struggle because they're doing so wonderful, but that's what, how we've been supporting them the most. Um, the teachers are reaching out to families, um, often, and we collaborate weekly on who we're having trouble getting in touch with, and then together with support staff, I reach out to those parents, so I think right now, we're good.
What's the, what's the biggest feedback from the parents that they need help with?
Um, flexibility. They need help, um, knowing that just because a teacher posts something in the lesson plan for Tuesday, it doesn't necessarily mean it has to be done on Tuesday. I think just understanding that, um, although we're offering, um, a timeline, the timelines are flexible and parents can navigate through those lesson plans as, um, works for their family.
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you, Chris.
Any other comments, questions from the board?
Yeah, Dave, this is Audrey. I just had a question about kindergarten roundup and if that has, um, been done virtually or are there plans to do it virtually?
Yes, thank you, Audrey, I should've mentioned that. May 13th at 6 o'clock, we'll be holding a virtual kindergarten kickoff via this Google Meet format. I sent out invitations to all parents whose email we had on file that were, um, already registered to attend kindergarten kickoff. Um, I'll be doing that in collaboration with our kindergarten teachers, and hopefully we'll have, um, I've had some teachers send me videos, like special teachers and things, so that those students can kinda recognize those teachers and start hearing their voices and the parents as well, and I'll do a virtual tour of the school. Um, so we'll have a presentation, um, through Google Meet, and that will also be recorded and put on the website to, um, give to those parents who may not be able to attend on May 13th at 6 o'clock. But so far, we have a lot of people saying yes, they'll attend. Our number is still at that 55-56 that we had spoke about earlier in the year, and we're still looking to run with our Young Five programs as well. We have a lot of interest in that.
Okay, any other questions, comments from the board?
Dave, is that, um, I noticed there was one thing, I'm not sure if Mr. Oki doesn't seem to be on or able to unmute, but, um, as I was reading the reports, I noticed that there was an opportunity for us to have a co-op football program with Landmark High School. Um, from what I can glean from what's written here is, um, the first step, basically what it would mean is, some, since Landmark does not have a football team, um, there would be an opportunity to have some of their athletes play here at Memphis and bolster our football team a bit, and they, they would play under the Memphis colors, obviously. Like the first step is to get board approval, and then, um, Mr. Oki'd have to get our league approval as well, so, um, the way I read it, it says, we gotta have the approval by June 1st, so, um, not sure if he was asked on, come on and off the meeting, so I'm not sure if he's having internet connection problems, but...
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Marty, 'cause I, I remember reading that, but I had forgotten it. Um, I think we'll, uh, make sure we put that on our agenda for the May meeting, so, um, Laura, if you can take note of that to make sure we put that under new business, um, so we can discuss that and vote on it at the, at the May meeting.
Yep, I'd be happy to, Dave.
Okay, anything else for Mrs. Hankins? All right, we'll, uh, move on to Mr. Karappa.
Could I make a comment, please?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, not at, um, not at this point in the meeting. Um, we're on to, uh, the reports by Mr. Karappa, please.
Yes, uh, hi, everybody, can you hear me? I hear you, man.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good. Um, I just wanted to, um, uh, just echo kinda what Susan was saying about the vacant staff, uh, teachers, uh, they've been working extremely hard to get things ready for this online, uh, learning, um, and they continue to do so, um, so, so a big shout out to our teachers, uh, who have put in some, some really extra, uh, extra hours here, get some things ready for online. Uh, also, um, I wanted to thank, uh, our parent professionals who have been working with Mr. Corbett, um, weekly to distribute, uh, paper rental packets for families who don't have internet access. We're doing this every Thursday, um, and so far, we've had some great, um, great turnouts, people coming to pick up their packets to the circle drive, um, and I just wanna thank those, those parent professionals and Mr. Corbett as well for all the time they're putting in, working on that. Um, we continue to, to plan for our seniors, our senior class 2020, we want to give them the graduation they deserve, of course, uh, so we will have an announcement coming later this week. Uh, again, we have to be mindful of Governor Whitmer's orders, uh, but we are, continue to discuss an outdoor graduation and a grade to precede that, uh, for sometime in the near future, um, so, I didn't put it in the board announcements, I'm not exactly sure yet on our plan for supposed to meet this week, and the office teams kinda discussed that, so we should be getting that up in the end of the week, hopefully. Uh, and also, I know Mr. Goodby and Mr. Cuget have already started talking about locker cleanout. That's another thing we've been working on, a lot of inquiry from parents and, and students about getting it in lockers, getting things out. Uh, hopefully, we have some more news for them, um, during the first week of May, um, so please, again, stay tuned for that. Um, I guess also the other thing that I really wanna say is that Mr. Gerselberger's made huge help to all of us, uh, through this process with all the virtual things we have going on. He's really been, uh, a, uh, help with our teachers, with our parents, myself, with our staff getting things done and ironing out all the kinks, so, uh, shout out to him and shout out to everyone for all the hard work, and, um, that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, Mr. Karappa, any comments, questions on that, uh, report from Mr. Karappa from the board?
Hey, Matt, same, same questions went to Susan, from, from your input from the teachers and parents, anything that they need to really help on?
Uh, yeah, there's been, there's been, we've had some email back and forth, uh, I think it's just, uh, the unknown. I think it's from a lot of parents, as soon as it's starting something new, being a little worried about it, making mistakes, trying to do the right thing, um, you know, we just been telling parents, you know, you've got time to do this, it's not like, uh, like you're sitting in seats and we're, you're guilty today, it's due at the end of the hour, it is given to you on Monday, um, you know, take your time, work on it this week, uh, you can chat with us on a couple of days a week to, to, to get some information, maybe you need some help with it, um, but ultimately, just to let them know that we're all doing this together, solving for all of us, and that, um, you know, you know, they're working hard at home, I know, and they're, they're still, people are still working, uh, and we, we definitely take all that into consideration, so it's been just, just questioning about, um, you know, our process and how we, how we, you know, how we can make it easier for them. I think a lot of the parents are reaching out individually, so we're, we're taking them case by case, and teachers have been very supportive, uh, they've been really, um, responding, so I just, I think things are going pretty, pretty good for now, so far, for the first two weeks.
Is there any hardware or material they need, though?
Um, you know what, as of now, I haven't heard a lot of that. I know Mr. Gerselberger was in contact with a couple of staff members about some individual needs, um, but as of right now, I've not heard of anyone needing anything extra or additional this time.
Thanks, Matt.
Any other questions, comments, um, from the board from Mr. Karappa on the reports?
Yeah, I don't know if he'll even be able to answer, so how's the student participation?
Uh, so far, I, you know, I, we have a, a sheet that we use as a staff, um, to log kinda which students don't respond and which do. There've been very few that have not responded, uh, some parents have reached out to us, our system's been helping get their students to, to kinda, uh, get more into it, um, I'm not sure that all the students are thinking that this is, you know, something that's necessary, um, so we've been trying to respond that way, but really, I would say probably, I guess I don't wanna put a number on it, but we really haven't had a lot of, uh, parents that we have not been able to get ahold of, that have not responded, um, either through the Google chat, through email, um, phone calls, things like that. We, we pretty much make contact with everybody, but of course, about a hundred percent.
Okay.
Matt, um, Marty Cook, good evening. Um, I, I know that the, the edict that came down from Lansing said that anyone who is on track to graduate, graduates. Do we have any, do we have any number of students that are in any peril of not graduating?
Um, at the last meeting, I had Ms. Gackey and Mr. Corbett, uh, we were only looking at one of our students at this time, um, so the rest were on track too, or are, are close enough that we, um, didn't feel that they would not be part of that, uh, graduating class, and those individuals, again, Ms. Gackey, Mr. Corbett, myself, uh, Ms. Mulkey, our college advisor, we've all been on them to make sure that they stay participating and keep, keep staying on track, uh, but as of this time right now, we only have about one for sure that we think that walks up and will make the cut.
Well, those are, um, typical reports that we get when we can meet in person. Um, is there anything for maintenance, transportation, um, technology, or food service that we need to cover this evening? Any comments or questions from the board?
Hey, Dave, this is Chris. Uh, I did wanna kinda, just, the locker cleanout has begun, um, and what we've done is we've been cleaning out the lockers, throwing away the water bottles, the garbage, bagging up everything that, uh, belongs to students, whether it's personal stuff or just their homework that's in their lockers, uh, we're labeling it, so hopefully, next week or the week after, we'll be able to take and start scheduling parents to come in and pick up the stuff. Um, how that's gonna happen yet is still to be determined, but it is in process of
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments from the board?
Hey, Chris, just, it, it's just for, for future, I wouldn't mind next, next month, if we could, start going through cleanliness plans in the building on things we're gonna do to enhance and make sure that we have a regular clean, cleaning structure put in place. Yeah, absolutely, not a problem. And Chris, part of that plan might be anything you may need.
Okay, any other comments, questions from Mr. Cuget? Okay, so that will complete the report section of the agenda. Um, at this point, we're at, um, public comment, section eight, so we had two for public comment. Generally, you know, the public's allowed to speak for three minutes, um, and overall, we limit it to 30 minutes, but in this case, um, we only have two, um, scheduled public comments, and, um, we'll begin, um, with Kathleen, we had last digits, um, 1-1, let's Kathleen, if you're still with us, if you could unmute your line. Kathleen K.
Hello, can you hear me? This is Kathleen.
Yes, I can hear you.
I would like to...
Go ahead.
I'd like to say, um, uh, welcome for, um, having me speak publicly at the board meeting, um, I'd like to say hello to the school board, to the superintendent, um, Brad. The reason, um, um, my name's Kathleen Coretich, I am the UNISERV Director for Michigan Education Association, I represent the union members in St. Clair County. I would like to go on record that I was not asked by the Memphis Education Association and Teachers Union to speak tonight, was not asked by them to speak, and that what I have to share is not their stance on the situation that I'm going to address. What I'd like to address is just a timeline and a correlation, um, about a discussion that's gonna be had later in the meeting, and that is, that I take issues and concerns that are brought to me when employees, generally teachers, um, have concerns, they come to the UNISERV Director, and then I, um, further research them, come up with solutions, and try to, um, assist in ways that we can resolve conflict. And at the end of last school year, there were some conflicts going on, and, um, I met with some teachers, they had, um, concerns. When we talked about resolutions, no one that came to me with a concern was willing to file a complaint for fear of retaliation and retribution. It was pleasing when I found out that Brad was going to have and talk to 47 staff members in October to do a survey interview, um, at the direction of the school board, to kinda get the pulse of what was going on in the district, to develop some goals and some action items. I have documents in front of me, and, um, there were concerns that November 27th in his document that he gave to the staff, that there were, um, concerns and the low ratings were, there's correlation between teacher salary and the dispatch satisfaction with administration. I'm proud to say that the school board and the union have worked very close and have come up and corrected, um, a, a, a contract in teacher salaries, and I thank you. However, from last year... However, from last year through the time that forty-seven staff members were interviewed, November twenty-seventh, at which time, um, Brad gave goals and action items to, uh, work on with his, his administration and his staff, my concern is that, um, the concerns that were brought to me a year ago, the concerns that showed up in October, the goals and action items that were talked and discussed, um, by Brad in his November twenty-seventh letter to his teachers have not been resolved, and in January sixth, a complaint was given to the school board, a very, very lengthy complaint that, um, caused or, um, started an, an investigation. Investigation was completed and on March ninth, the conclusion of the investigation, um, came up with the fact that the, um, person in, in, in question, behavior, has been ongoing for a period of time. Not new, it's not something that just happened, it's not a witch hunt, um, but that this behavior continues to, to exhibit, it's, and, and, and show itself in the attitude, the temperament, the words, and the actions. And so I would like the school board tonight to please realize when they're talking later on about, um, contract renewals, if you would please realize that this has been an ongoing problem, this is not something that just started, and people have not been willing to stand up and, um, and, and say what had to be said because of retaliation, and they right now are even nervous that, that they may be retaliated against because they shared, um, in the investigation. I'm just asking that you please realize that, that there is a direct correlation, that this is not something new, and this has not been corrected from last year, almost been a year now. I thank you for your time this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Um, next up, we have Mrs. Gruy, um, identification number twenty-seven.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you for allowing me a few moments to speak during tonight's meeting. Um, my name is Sarah Gruy. Um, I've worked at Memphis for two and a half years. Uh, the first year was with Brad Goodme and the rest was with, um, Matt Carrappa. Um, I am no longer an employee there, I chose to leave, so I just want to make note that, uh, I have no reason to fabricate the following. Um, even if my name is not recognizable to you, just please know that I loved my job. I loved the kids, uh, the families, the community, and I was positively involved. I chose to leave in December of two thousand eighteen because of the work environment. Uh, the last year of my employment was increasingly difficult as Matt Carrappa's interactions with me were unprofessional, accusatory, and unfair. As much as I was dedicated to my students...
Mr. President, Mr. President, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you, Ms. Gruy. Mr. President, you know those, uh, personal names that are actually not allowed during public comment?
Yep, Mrs. Gruy, I just wanted to...
I did not know that, I apologize, that's my fault. I did not know that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mrs. Gruy, per our board policy one sixty-seven point three.
I'm, I'm sorry, I did, I did not know that, that's my fault, I, I'm sorry. Um, so it was increasingly difficult as, um, some interactions with me were, uh, unprofessional, accusatory, and unfair. As much as I was dedicated to my students and families of Memphis, I could no longer subject myself to this continual unfair and unwarranted harassment. Before deciding to leave, I did follow a chain of command.
I'm going to have to object again, Mr. President, it's already been, it is, it is this line, it continues down the same path.
Mrs. Gruy, I, I have to, I have to warn you, um, it's, um, I'll, I'll reiterate our board policy one sixty-seven point three, if you have not seen it, but, um, um, please refrain from personally directed, um, comments to the board.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry. Um, again, I didn't know. Um, I, I did follow the chain of command and sought out advice. Um, I felt like the environment did not improve and I decided to leave. Um, I, it continued and I did not feel comfortable coming to work. I dreaded coming to work and the only reason that I continued the last few months was for the students. I know there are people who have not witnessed, um, some behaviors and I wish I was one of them because I would have never left Memphis if I, um, didn't experience this type of environment. So again, I will apologize, um, for the, the rules that you had mentioned, I was unaware of them and I did not break them intentionally, so thank you for hearing me out.
Um, excuse me, um, Mr. Ryan?
Uh, who's speaking?
Um, Lisa Druck. Um, I emailed you prior to the board meeting, um, about public, uh, speaking and wanted to this evening. Um, when I got on the meeting, I believe I missed, um, the opportunity to request that, but if you do check your email, I did send one prior, um, asking and being a little unsure of how to do this. So I guess I'm asking permission off of the email I sent and, um, I just texted somebody how to unmute, um, so I was wondering if I would be able to speak.
Uh, I'm just, uh, I would need direction from the board if we want to open public comment up further because we took, uh, we took a, um, registration at the beginning of the meeting, um, for those wishing to make public comment. I think we had established guidelines in place, um, on the school website on how public comment was going to be taken for this meeting, so if anybody would like a motion to change any, any, um, of what we had agreed on, I'll hear it out, otherwise we'll continue on.
Dave, I got disconnected. I was, she was in the middle of her public comment and everything froze, so I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Uh, Mrs. Druck had sent an email, um, to me this evening asking to make public comment and how to make public comment. She was wishing to make public comment at this time. Um, at the beginning of the meeting, we had taken registration of public comment, so, um, unless, uh, unless the board feels otherwise, we're going to continue on as, as planned.
Are you meaning not allowing any more public comments?
Right, we had registration of public comment, item five on the agenda.
I'm not opposed to it, uh, the public comment, only because of technical issues here. I'm not sure how fair it would be.
If I don't have any motion from the board, um, to accept any more public comment, we'll continue on here. I'm sorry, Mrs. Druck, we'll have to, uh, catch you at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Hi, this is Mr. Rickert. I didn't know, uh, public comment was for current teachers or, or, I, I didn't register then because I wasn't sure it was, I thought it was meant for parents in the community.
This is, this is Lori Sandborn, and I also thought the same thing that, uh, Mr. Rickert just said.
Um, I think public comment is, is, you know, when I look at our policy here, it's, it's public comment on educational issues, allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters.
Right, I kind of looked at it as members of the public is members of the community, I, I didn't know if there, I thought there would be another current staff members. This is the first one of these, uh, types of meetings I've planned this weekend, so...
I know.
My bad, I'm, I understand. All right.
All right, um, I think that completes our public comment then. We're on to, uh, correspondence, which there is none. Um, we're on to, there's no old business, and so that brings us to new business, which is the ESS substitute agreement, formerly PCMI for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. So item A under new business, ESS substitute agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the ESS substitute agreement for twenty-twenty-one school year as presented.
Support.
We have motion by Mr. Paray, supported by Mrs. Bobsey. Is there any discussion? No discussion, we'll take a roll call vote.
Okay, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Paray?
Yes.
Mrs. McQ?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobsey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, all yes on the roll call vote, so the motion carries. Next up, we have item B, summer tax resolution for twenty-twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve the summer tax resolution for twenty-twenty-one as presented. That's O'Connor.
Or support.
Okay, we have motion by Mrs. O'Connor, supported by Mr. Cook, to approve the summer tax resolution for twenty-twenty-one as presented. Is there any discussion of the board? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Paray?
Yes.
Mrs. McQ?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a unanimous all yes from the board on the summer tax resolution for twenty-twenty-one as presented. Up next, we have the administrative contract discussion. Do we have a request for closed session on this topic?
Uh, no, I, I'm, by the way, my name is Bill Langman, I represent Matthew Carrappa, and it is my understanding that we are, uh, requesting an open session.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Langman.
Are you ready for me to proceed at this time, or? Dave? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Martin Cook. Uh, so are other attorneys on the line? I'd like to know who they are and who they're representing, please.
Sure, uh, this is Roy Henley from Truett Law Firm. I've been asked to come in and, uh, facilitate this meeting on behalf of the board of the district. Uh, I think we also have Gene Sturtridge on the line since, uh, Mr. Sturtridge did a lot of the investigation in this case. So I'm, uh, happy Gene can proceed with this as best we can whenever everyone's ready.
Gene Sturtridge, um, also on behalf of the Memphis Community Schools, um, I've been listed as, uh, an attorney for you folks for the last eighteen years. In this particular matter, my understanding is, uh, that I was called upon to conduct an independent and outside investigation into certain allegations on behalf of the board.
Okay, we can proceed.
Okay, uh, Roy Henley, again, let me just make a couple of introductory remarks. Um, as everyone knows, at this point, this is regarding whether or not Mr. Carrappa's, uh, contract will be continued as junior or senior high school principal. It's a proceeding under the school code. This is a little bit different than what you find in the private sector. In the private sector, when someone's employment contract runs out and no one gives them a new contract, pretty much so does their employment. Um, in public schools, it's a little bit different. So for it to have an administrator's contract end when it says it ends, we have to go through this procedure under, uh, the school code. I know the board has been involved in that, but what basically happens at this point is the board hears the reasons that the administration is recommending, uh, that the contract end. Mr. Langman is here on behalf of Mr. Carrappa, I'm sure he's going to have some things to say as well. Um, but this isn't a trial, this is a chance to talk about the issue, and if the board thinks that the reasons given are sufficient and that they're credible and that they're not completely arbitrary, which means just not fanciful, um, and the board wants to non-renew the contract, then they can do so. If they don't want to non-renew the contract, then they can do so as well. We will need to take a vote on that eventually, um, at the time we're done hearing from everyone who wants to talk. Basically, I think the way to do this is that since, um, there is some burden of proof upon, uh, the administration that's asserting that Mr. Carrappa's contract should end, administration should go first. I've been asked to facilitate the witnesses on behalf of the administration just, uh, to get that information in. So, having said that, uh, maybe it's time to hear from the first witness. Uh, during public contract, or during public comment, Sarah Gruy, um, started to talk about her experiences with Mr. Carrappa. I was wondering if Ms. Gruy is still on the line. Anything for Ms. Gruy?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay, uh, this is no longer public comment, this is now a hearing on, uh, on Mr. Carrappa's contract, and you were starting to explain some things, Ms. Gruy. Um, you're a former employee with the district, you said?
Yes, sir.
And what was your job?
I was a math teacher.
Uh, at what level?
Uh, high school and a little bit of middle school, so secondary.
All right, and when did you leave?
I left in December of two thousand eighteen.
And you said that you experienced some harassment, correct?
I did.
Who was the harasser?
Am I able to, I'm able to say names, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Matt Carrappa.
And could you tell us specifically what kind of harassment, uh, you experienced from him?
Um, some were, it was various meetings of, whether it was a, an official meeting or passing in the hallway, um, emails. I don't know if IT is able to retrieve that information from that long ago, uh, but emails during school, after school, um, accusatory that I was not performing my job duties, even though on countless times I had produced copious amounts of evidence that I was completing and going above and beyond. and going above and beyond. Uh, I felt like there was an intimidation factor. Uh, it did not start that way, that I will be a hundred percent honest about. It, it, it was great for the first, I would say, six months, and then I ran into, started having some issues, and it wasn't, uh, it just, uh, I would say it would, it increased from there, is the most fair way to put that, until I didn't feel comfortable, um, coming to work, I didn't want to come to work. Um, the only reason I did was for the students, as I stated.
Okay. Um, can you tell us about when the intimidation started?
Um, probably, like, the second semester of the first, of his first year. The first semester was great, I was on, you know, I volunteered to be on the data team, the school improvement team, I was going through grad school, um, and he was very helpful with helping me get some ideas and finishing that coursework. Um, but after about six months, that's when it, it started, um, and then, as I said, increased from there. Um, it started with both myself and my co-teacher, which I won't name because I don't want to speculate and bring, um, others into it, but, um, that, about six months into it.
Can you give us a calendar date as to when you thought the intimidation started?
Um, so, that would have been, the first contract year would have been 2017, so I would say January, after winter break, so January of 2017.
And what specific actions of intimidation, uh, did you experience?
Um, it just kind of started off with, with emails of, um, I'm not doing my job, why aren't you, um, you know, and I'm, again, I'm producing, uh, copious amounts of documentation that I am doing my job, um, and, uh, went there from meetings, um, and this is, these are my rules in my school, um, and I just, I honestly, I tried to stay out of his way, and I felt like the more I tried to make it better, somehow the worse it got, and I just, I tried to stay out of it as best that I could.
And when did you decide to leave your employment?
I left in, um, I put in my two weeks, it was parent, the week of parent-teacher conferences in, uh, November of 2018, because I remember having a lot of tears with parents that I was leaving, um, and I, uh, stayed through, uh, winter break, uh, so that Memphis was able to find a replacement for me. So I stayed about a month after I put in my quote-unquote "two weeks."
Okay. Um, are you employed now?
Yes, I am.
Where do you work?
I work for Risa.
Uh, St. Clair Risa?
Yes.
Uh, doing what?
I'm a math interventionist for Riverview East.
Okay. Um, let me backtrack a little bit, you mentioned that Mr. Carafa would say, these are my rules, this is my school. Um, what did you find intimidating about statements like that?
Uh, in some cases, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, continue.
Oh, no, I cut you off, uh, or why did you find those statements intimidating?
Uh, I, some of them, you know, I would get an email at, uh, after school, sometime after school into the evening, you know, we will meet about this tomorrow morning. Uh, in one case, I went on a field trip to Saginaw Valley, uh, and I said, well, just a reminder, I, I'm happy to meet, but I had this field trip and we're leaving at eight fifteen, whatever that, that time was, and he said, the meeting will take as long as, uh, it needs to take, or I need it to take. Um, that to me just didn't feel very cooperative. Uh, we did have a meeting, I was there, I did follow through, but, uh, things of that nature didn't make me feel like it was a partnership, working together for the students, and that, that's the reason we're all in education.
Uh, I think that's all I've got, Mr. Langeman might have some questions for you, though.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Bill Langeman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Um, isn't it true that, uh, you left school early on a regular basis, and that was, uh, a big part of the, the, some of the discipline you received from Mr. Carafa?
Um, that was not the basis of, he did make a comment to me, so the bell rang at two fifty-five. Um, a part of working at Memphis was, I did work another job, and I, everyone, um, I mean, I openly shared that I did work another job to supplement the income. I did love working there, and that was just something that I obviously decided to do. Again, bells rang at two fifty-five, um, Mr. Carafa reminded me, rightfully so, that our contract was until three o'clock, and I didn't think that we had issues after that.
So you admit that you, you left early on a regular basis, and then Mr. Carafa had to discuss that, that was inappropriate with you, is that correct?
I did not leave early on a regular basis, I'm, I left early, what I would think, so the bell rang at two fifty-five, I, Matt had stopped me one day and said, your contract was until three, and I had apologized, and we did not have an issue, I don't believe, after that.
Isn't it true that you, uh, skipped staff meetings, uh, without permission?
I did not. I missed, um, two staff meetings my last year. Uh, both times, I did let Matt know that I was going to be gone. Uh, one day I did leave early sick, and the other day I messaged him and let him know that I was not going to make the staff meeting. Um, I had a, I couldn't tell you, I don't know if it was a doctor's appointment, I don't really want to make anything up, particularly at this moment, but I did let him know that I would get the information from a coworker.
You don't want to make anything up now, but you're okay with making up the facts earlier?
Wait, that's argumentative, I'm not following that, sir.
So, Ms. Gruy, Ms. Gruy, um, you, in your testimony to Mr. Henley, I could hear, uh, all I really heard here was that he sent you some emails, uh, and asking for a meeting, and that is the extent of the alleged intimidation that Mr. Carafa inflicted upon you? That he sent you some emails and asked to meet you, uh, before school started?
No, sir. Um, there were emails on countless occasions, much less.
And what other facts were there then? What other facts, other than the emails? If the, if the emails were not, what, what other facts were there that support your statement that he intimidated you, retaliated against you, uh, or harassed you?
I would ask that you be allowed to finish, so please go ahead.
So, on, in, and emails was just an example, so I would run into him during school, and he would have, uh, conversations with me that I felt like were intimidating, uh, both before school, after school. Uh, I only used the email instance because he would email, uh, you know, I mean, that's just a part of the communications, it's both in person and in email, so.
Your testimony today is, I'm sorry, your testimony today is that he would see you in the course of the hallway, and in the hallway, in front of other people, he would intimidate you in, in the way he spoke to you? Is that just your, your testimony today?
That's how I felt, yes.
Okay. So, what, what did, when, when you, you felt that way, but that's, you know, that's your feelings, and I, I understand that, what did he do that intimidated you? What was his actions? Stopping and talking to a teacher in the hallway does not constitute intimidation.
But, that type of question.
Oh, Mr. Henley, Mr. Henley, I'm, Mr. Henley, I'm asking the question of Ms. Gruy, I did not interrupt you during your questions.
And I am telling you that this board will not hear this type of inappropriate, argumentative, badgering questions. If you want to ask a reasonable question, please feel free to do so.
What was unreasonable about asking that question?
Ask it again.
The question was, what action did Mr. Carafa do that made you feel uncomfortable? You said he stopped and talked to you. That's not an action that, that constitutes intimidation. What did he do that intimidated you? What, a physical action? You're again arguing. I'm asking what physical action Mr. Carafa did? She testified that he intimidated her. What did he do? I'm asking, simply asking the question.
Am I okay to answer, because this in itself is a little, okay? Um, so, within those interactions, he would just, you know, yeah, I thought we were going to get along, and we're not, and, you know, I don't, I mean, I, I can't recall specific conversations, but the way he, and the only reason I mention, make mention to the email is because those are facts that if IT is able to dig up, then that's black and white evidence instead of how I feel and things that have happened, but, I mean, the way I felt like he spoke to me wasn't, hey, I'm sorry you missed the meeting, let me get you caught up. It was more of a, I don't know why you missed the meeting, um, I received a text from a coworker, like, Matt is mad at you for missing this meeting, those aren't the exact words, um.
I have to object to any statements that are going to be hearsay, that are unreliable, so I'm going to have to object to that. Mr. Henley, please, forget what they know, not what they've been hearing from other people.
We are not going by formal rules of evidence.
I understand that.
Go ahead.
Rumors are not something that we should be allowing, though, Mr. Henley, that's my statement.
It's not a rumor, Mr. Henley, it's a statement made by the person, and helps to have her identify and explain.
A statement that someone else made to her, that's a rumor.
Don't yell at me, stop.
If you continue like this, we are done. You have no due process rights, you have no right to intimidate, yell, cut people off. This is an informal hearing, if you cannot abide by reasonable rules, you have a way at them.
Here, okay, so, so, um... Excuse me, Mr. President, this is Martin Cook. I would like to make a motion to, uh, for a fifteen-minute adjournment, um, and for a closed session, for the board to discuss whether this should continue with, um, the attorney that was not requested by a majority of this board to handle this. I'm not sure who invited Roy to facilitate this, but it was not the board. Um, so I guess I'll finish my motion, I would make the motion to remove Roy as the facilitator for this, we did not ask him to be here, didn't ask him to be here.
Is there an active motion on the table already?
Yes, there was a motion for adjournment.
I thought we still have a motion for...
There's no motion on the floor, I remove my first motion. Make a motion to remove Roy as the facilitator of this, this is a school board meeting, not a courtroom, and, uh, the attorney was not asked by this board, or a majority of this board, to facilitate this conversation, as he stated in his introduction.
Let me get your motion correct, Mr. Cook, your motion is to remove?
I would like to remove, I, I didn't get Roy's last name, sorry, but I would like to, um, the attorney from Truitt Law is the facilitator of this, he stated in his introduction that he was asked to facilitate this by the board. It's not a true statement, um, this board did not vote in any way, it was asked in any way, shape, or form for him to do this, and frankly, uh, it's, uh, this is a school board meeting, not, um, not a court of law.
Hi, I'm Mr. Cook. To remove Mr. Henley from facilitating this meeting, do I have support? Um...
Motion died, relax, go to a second, Mr. Cook.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, will you take control of the meeting, please?
Excuse me. I'm pausing for a moment to make sure everybody has a minute to unmute their lines. I have a motion on the floor for Mr. Cook to remove Mr. Henley from facilitating this discussion. Do I have support? Alright. Alright, the motion has died, we'll carry on.
Excuse me, this, excuse me, this is Sue Durst. I did support it, I, I'm sorry, you must not have heard me.
Okay, I have more, motion and support. Uh, motion by Mr. Cook, supported by Mrs. Durst. To remove Mr. Henley from facilitating this meeting, or this discussion. Um, Mrs. Heilich, can you take a roll call vote?
Yes, I can. Mr. Ryan?
No.
Mr. Paray?
No.
Mrs. McQ?
No.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
No.
Mrs. Bobsey?
No.
Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
Alright, so we have, um, the noes have it at five to two. So the motion has died. We will carry on with the discussion.
Ms. Gruy, are you there? This is Bill Langeman.
I am.
Okay. Um, is it your understanding that Mr. Carafa is the principal, was the principal of high school when you were, uh, teaching there?
Um, Brad Goodme was the principal my first year there, and then Matt Carafa was the principal thereafter.
Okay. And, uh, when Matthew Carafa was the principal there, he was the, in charge of that school?
Yes.
He was, is he essentially your boss?
Yes.
And so, when you stated earlier that, you know, you, that you were not, he was the boss and you were the employee to a certain extent, isn't that true?
I would agree with that, yes.
And so you didn't have a personal relationship in the, where you were co-equals on a, on a, the same, uh, level, per se, isn't that true?
I would agree.
And you would also agree that, other than some emails that you referred to, and some discussion in, uh, hallways, you have no evidence of any intimidation or harassment today, other than those statements, is that correct?
Uh, can you repeat the question, I'm sorry? I'm misunderstanding, I think I misunderstood.
Other than the statements that you said, that he had sent some emails to you, which you have not been able to produce, and that he talked to you in the hallway, uh, which you felt was inappropriate? You have no other evidence of any type of intimidation or harassment that he, that, uh, by Mr. Carafa against you, is that correct?
I only have a few emails from that timeframe, but because I have, you know, I haven't worked there in over a year, I don't have access to my school email anymore. But if I did have access, then I would have more evidence.
So you don't have the emails, and you don't have any, you can't, you can't cite any physical actions, uh, or anything that, specifically that Matthew Carafa did to intimidate you, other than talking to you in the hallway, is that correct?
I'm not, I, I, I apologize, the way I worded, I don't know if I wholeheartedly agree with it or not, I'm sorry.
Well, you, you haven't given us any other statements other than that, isn't that correct? Those statements, you said there's some emails in there, and that there was some, something in the hallway, that he talked to in the hallway, but you have no, you can't recall any physical acts or anything of intimidation? I have no further questions.
No further questions from me for Ms. Gruy. Is Kathleen Corrigan still on the line?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to object to having her being called, she is, she was an MEA director, uh, anything that she had that would be said is, is going to be hearsay. She is not in a position to comment on Matthew Carafa's, uh, management and his treatment... She is not in a position to comment on Matthew Carafa's, uh, management and his treatment of this, of, uh, teachers and how he ran his school.
And so noted, is, uh, Ms. Corrigan still available? Apparently not. Okay, um, is Jean Sturridge on the line?
I am.
Terrific. Um, Ms. Sturridge, can you tell us what you do and who you work for?
I work for the Sinclair County Regional Educational Service Agency. Um, in this particular matter, I, um, or as you may or may not know, I, um, I have the responsibility of working with the seven local educational, um, agencies located in the jurisdiction of the Sinclair County RISA, to the extent that our interests don't conflict. What that means is, so long as it's not a dispute between the Sinclair County RISA and one of our local districts, I perform legal duties, uh, provide legal advice and guidance, um, if requested, uh, on behalf of each of the Board of Education. And in this particular instance, I was, um, made aware of a complaint that had been filed, as well as a written response, and asked to investigate, um, some matters that arose, or at least were documented in January of 2020.
And what would you like to tell us about that?
Well, I conducted an investigation in which I spoke directly to a number of individuals, both current employees, prior employees, uh, employees of other entities that had a direct interaction, um, with, uh, with people involved in this particular instance. And I was, um, able to, uh, interview all of them, and I submitted a written summary of investigation dated February 24th. I wrote it, I addressed it to the superintendent, but it was clear to me and everyone else, as I undertook this, that Mr. Goodme was reporting out that I had been, uh, asked to be involved, that I was conducting this investigation, and so I undertook that, um, responsibility with great care.
Could you describe how you went about that investigation?
Yes, initially I reviewed, uh, the complaints, some emails that had been sent to the Memphis School Board, uh, by one of the, um, teachers, and, uh, then I reviewed also the board policies that were cited, as well as the eight-page written response, I believe it was eight pages, eight-page written response, um, from Mr. Carafa. This information was presented to the Board of Education. At that time, there was some concern that I had not spoken directly to Mr. Carafa. I remained open to do that, um, and so I did then follow up with, um, an interview that lasted 42 minutes with Mr. Carafa on March 2nd of 2020. During the course of my investigation, I reviewed several documents, including, uh, a survey. I was also provided, um, I believe, uh, some emails that went, uh, to the staff, um, and I was familiar with the communication out after that survey was completed. I was also aware of an incident in 2017 that I had segregated in my mind and in my investigation. Um, but I did interview, I believe it was 19 individuals. I did not place any limits on their, um, talking to me or providing me with whatever information they wanted. It was initially, um, the complaint involved harassment as well as, um, non-sexual gender harassment, so I believed I had the obligation to review it under a Title IX lens, at least as it related to the gender issue. As I continued through the investigation, I determined that there was not a Title IX violation or a sexual harassment, gender harassment, um, on its, uh, on the information that I had, and I did follow the board's policy as to their definitions of harassment and things of that nature, and I found that in fact that had occurred. I did note that there appeared to be, um, uh, this, uh, there, there seemed to be an impact on female employees or female individuals that had come into contact with Mr. Carafa, that there were conflicts, and there may have been, um, some, some level of disparity between the impact, but I did not find that there was sexual harassment or gender, uh, harassment as defined.
About how many, uh, junior, senior high school faculty members did you talk to?
Current or former?
Uh...
All of those.
Uh, how about all of those?
Um, either current or former junior, senior high school staff members, I would say 14.
Okay, um, and did you make any findings regarding Mr. Carafa's behavior, professional behavior?
I did. Um, but I guess what was most concerning initially was that all but one individual that were either current or for, former staff members at that school were very concerned, and I included that in the second paragraph of my document, and I put it in quotes. Obviously, no one person said all those words, but they reported that they were afraid, they were concerned, they were terrified, uh, they were scared about their job, uh, they felt that he was tit for tat, he was, um, they feared retribution, that he was quick to temper, uh, they felt that, uh, he needs to be right. Um, then he talked about staying completely out of his way, trying to keep a very low profile, and they certainly did not want, um, to be the target or subject of any sort of revenge, retribution, whatever. And that was concerning about, um, that number of staff members or former staff members talking about that. Um, so I had some significant concerns about his level of professionalism, and I've conducted lots of investigations over the years, and this was really telling in that sense.
About how many people expressed those concerns to you that you just reviewed?
All but one, or, no, I'm sorry, there were two. Uh, was, um, quite a bit of an outlier, the one that didn't directly say that they were afraid, terrified, scared, or whatever, just that they didn't want to be on the wrong side of them, and although they had not personally felt that yet, uh, that they believed it, they had seen it, and, um, they were concerned.
Did people provide you examples of behaviors that caused them to feel those emotions?
They did describe a number of, of things. Um, they talked about, um, being in, um, kind of like a persona non grata, that if you were not one of the in people, or if you were not one of the friendly people to him and with him, part of his group, ignored, um, that there was no reciprocity in terms of, um, say normally you'd say good morning, how was your weekend, or how was your day, or how are things going? There would be a no answer. Um, so there was this lack of relationship that was also noted in, um, I believe, the evaluation, the most recent evaluation and in the survey. They talked about, um, Senator Carafa having a hot head, being dismissive of women, um, that they talked about, um, that he would move closer to people. You know what I really hate outside? Nigger, digger, digger, digger. Pardon me, there's somebody on the line talking. Also, um, they talked about, um, they had been spoken to in a degrading manner, that they didn't feel as, uh, a team member, they did not feel that there was any respect. There was a pounding on the desk, pounding up with his fist. Uh, more than one person talked about it, uh, more than one person, in fact, many people talked about it in different settings. Um, there was a, a fair amount of, uh, reports that there was video and audio taping that happened in the cameras in the hallways, and that people had, had been having a conversation, let's say, with a colleague, and then shortly thereafter, the principal would come and speak to them about the topic that they had never raised with him, and the only time that it had been discussed was in the hallway. And so people took to ducking into classrooms where there was no audio, or video, rather, and that they would only speak to one another after they held up papers in front of their face, so that that would help somehow mute any conversation they had. They reported that he swore, he raised his voice, he gets up in, uh, people's personal space. Uh, they did not talk about, you know, there was no physical assault, and that's not required, but there was this imposing figure, um, that he is tall and he, and he recognizes that. Um, there was some concern, uh, I guess there was an employee that said Mr. Goodme had gone on to say that, you know, after the survey, you know, that his door was open, and at one point, some employee went to Mr. Goodme, and then Mr. Carafa responded, "Now that you've gone to my boss, I guess I have to listen to you." Uh, Mr. Carafa is reported to have yelled in front of a teacher, or yelled at a teacher in front of her class during a class period. Um, always needs to be right, and, um, puts on a good front when he wants to, uh, but people talk about a bullying-type behavior, and they don't want anybody to know that they're talking about him, and that he doesn't tell the truth, um, in order to, um, avoid responsibility.
And you, uh, put all of this in your February 24th, 2020 report, correct?
I did, except I didn't say that he intentionally didn't tell the truth. What I said is that I, you know, and again, trying to, um, put it in the light, I think, most favorable, I just indicated that he like, does not understand, you know, he doesn't see himself as others do, that there's a disconnect, uh, between that, that how he feels he's presenting versus how he does present. When I did interview him, and of course, I did read his statement and gave it some, you know, quite a bit of credence as I went through line by line, there were certain things that he just denied outright that didn't make any sense. Um, he claimed he's a people, you know, that he's very open, that he's, you know, that he doesn't know of any staff member that is concerned, um, that he does, you know, he, he's high-rated his teachers. Um, he says he never tries to be intimidating, um, he says he's always open, he's always approachable, but he does indicate that sometimes, you know, you, you are the boss. He indicates that he's had to have these conversations that are very difficult. He felt like he has had a good relationship with all of his teachers. Um, he doesn't think there's anything out of the ordinary that he does. He can't think of anything, um, that would be different than anybody who has crucial conversations with people. Um, he says that no one, um, indicates that he's difficult to work with, no one tells him that. Um, he kept going back to, um, that he's sure that Brad Goodme would have talked to him, you know, if there was any real problem. I did speak to Mr. Goodme, and, and my understanding is that there were some concerns, and those were raised with Mr. Carafa on more than one occasion. Um, and this type of dictatorship, uh, was, uh, something that I asked him, and, uh, he said absolutely not. He couldn't believe it. Um, in fact, in this particular case, he claimed that he really thought highly of the teacher that brought the complaint. Uh, he thought it was out of desperation because, you know, he doesn't feel she's doing a good job in the classroom. Um, he, you know, he doesn't feel that she was open to taking any criticism, and he didn't feel that she was open to making any changes or that he could help her. My investigation was not into whether or not the teaching practices, you know, could be improved or not. That wasn't my, my obligation. I was to determine whether or not there was any sort of harassing, bullying, intimidation, or something that caused an unprofessional community, a bad environment or climate within the school.
Um, is there anything else that you want the board to know about your investigation?
I did ask a couple of questions of Mr. Carafa when I spoke to him again, um, after that report, and I did ask him, "Was the statement true when you made it, and is the statement still true today?" And that was on the March 2nd. I asked him about the eight-page statement. I did ask him if it was true. He said it was. I asked him if there was anything he wanted to change about the statement. Was there anything at all that he remembered differently, or that, um, you know, perhaps he had misstated? Just giving him that opportunity. And then I said, "You know, I'm a lawyer, I gotta ask these kinds of questions. You know, you've been very clear that you didn't hit the desk, or you didn't, you know, slam your fist on the desk. You know, did you, did you hit anything? You know, did you tap on a table? Did you mean it? Did you, you know, feign anger just to get people's attention? You know, was there a table, a doorway, you know, something other than a desk that you would have struck or pounded on in anger, or appearing to be angry?" Absolutely not, never happened, and yet I spoke to at least five indivi, four individuals who had been witness to it, on different occasions and different settings, different meetings. Again, that's not proof positive that someone is harassing, but it concerns me that, um, either there's unwillingness to acknowledge a bad temper, or there's really just a disconnect between what other people see.
Oh, okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Langman?
In the scriptures, can you hear me?
I can.
All right, I forgot to unmute it. Um, so, you stated that you interviewed former, uh, employees at Memphis, is that correct?
Yeah.
Did you interview, um, Holly Keller?
I did not. But I don't really know, if I may, go ahead.
Okay. Um, are you aware that she wrote a letter in support of Matthew Carafa, saying that, that she, she thought he was a wonderful principal and did not leave because of, because of Matthew Carafa, is that correct? Have you heard that, or?
I have not seen that letter, sir, no I have not.
So, in your, in your, um, your February 24th letter to Brad Goodme, you wrote that, that you interviewed, uh, or that five female teachers have left employment of Memphis Community Schools, and that you, you felt like female employees believed that he treats them differently than their male counterparts, is that correct?
I'm just looking for the exact language, but on-
Is it on the last page? It's under the bullicid statements?
Oh, thank you. That sounded like what I wrote, yes.
So, um, you didn't talk to Holly Keller, she's a former employee. Did you talk to Jessica Dunsmore, another female former teacher at Memphis High School?
I did not.
Are you aware that, uh, Jessica Dunsmore also wrote an article in support of Matthew Carafa, saying that all of those allegations are untrue, and that she thought he was a wonderful principal, and never had an issue, and never left because of him, but because she had a better-paying job? Are you aware of that?
I am not aware of a letter that you're talking about, but that's not what that statement says, by the way.
No, but it's definitely insinuated.
No, it's not what, no, it's what I wrote. I wrote something very different than what you're characterizing it, sir.
Did you interview Bonnie Karam?
No, sir.
Are you aware that Bonnie Karam also wrote a letter in support of the, uh, Mr. Carafa and his role as a principal?
I've not ever heard her name before, I'm sorry, no.
No. She's a former teacher at Memphis Community Schools. How about Dawn Urban? Did you ever interview Dawn Urban?
I have interviewed Dawn Urban, yes.
And, um...
May I just object to, if we're going to go through all the names of people I may or may not have, um, interviewed, that concerns me because of the initial problem that we had with this particular situation, sir. But if your point is to say that I didn't interview three women, that's fine.
Well, actually, it's four. It's fourteen, it's, it's, uh, it's Dawn, oh, I'm sorry, Dawn Urban, you did interview, I'm sorry, so...
That's what I said.
Was Dawn Urban's, uh, comments in favor of, uh, Matthew Carafa today, support your conclusions that- that Matthew Carafa was intimidating teachers or that people were leaving because of him?
Well, that was, I didn't say what you're saying, I said, sir, you're mischaracterizing what I wrote. However, I did say that, no, Mrs. Urban or Miss Urban did not have the same experience as others.
Okay. Well, I...
You know I really hate niggers. You hate niggers?
Were you aware, were you at the March 23rd, 2020 board meeting?
Well, I wasn't there. I got called in at eight something, eight forty maybe, and was on the phone at eleven twenty.
Well, I believe based on your, this investigative summary, the board adopted some resolution and one of the allegations that in there was that during Mr. Carafa's tenure as principal, an unusual number of valued employees had resigned from the school. And I brought these letters up to the point, not, not that, that you necessarily stated that outright in your investigative summary, but that the board resolution kind of, basically does say that people were leaving because of Mr. Carafa. And you were here, you stated in yours that five people have left, five female teachers have left, four of which I have provided letters that support Mr. Carafa. And so I bring that up because I wanted to see what your comments were on those interviews, if you had done, if I interviewed them.
Did you provide those letters to me?
I provided those letters to the board. And so this is to the board information, I did email all of those letters to you, they're under Exhibit 3, they're in your email, so if you want to read them or see them, you have the ability to do so.
Are those not hearsay, sir? Isn't that the same concern you have about others?
So, um, right now, I'm asking the question, so thank you. Now, you testified earlier, or stated earlier, that you interviewed nineteen employees. And then later on...
No, I said, no, I said I interviewed nineteen people, not all of employees. If you, yeah.
Okay. So you interviewed fourteen employees, is that correct?
Fourteen current or former employees.
Okay. And how many, how many current employees did you interview?
Sir, I'm not, I can go through the list in my own mind, but I...
Well, did you take notes of these interviews?
Simply as a memory aid, but hang on.
You did, no, you took no notes during the interviews of these subjects?
Sir, I didn't say that. You're not listening, sir. I said I took notes as a memory aid, not verbatim statement.
One moment, actually, you did take notes during the interviews, is that correct?
I took some notes that are not verbatim statements, correct.
Did you, um, did you get witness statements at all from any of these interview subjects?
What do you mean?
Did you have them write down a statement?
I did not.
Okay. Um, were you in receipt of a FOIA request that I, I believe I mailed you? Or I mailed to the school?
Yeah, mailed it to me, it got forwarded to me, yeah.
Okay. And in that FOIA request, I requested your notes, your facts that you took down during these interviews, is that correct?
You FOIA'd public records under the law, which included notes of mine that are not public records and not maintained by the district and were outside the scope of the statute, sir.
They are public records, but okay.
No, they're not, sir. Want to put a court for that one? Because you keep saying it's true and then act as if that's true. It's not a public record. My summary is a public record.
Well, in your, well, then, thank you. I would like to bring your attention to your, to the summary. In your summary, is it true that you wrote on the second paragraph, that you interviewed more than ten employees? During the course of this investigation, I have interviewed a number of individuals, more than ten, sorry, not employees, that each person voiced each person voiced concern that the information they would provide would be discussed with Mr. Carafa and they were afraid, terrified, scared, and that you would be angry and that they would face retaliation or become his target. Is that what you wrote down in that investigative summary?
Yeah.
Isn't it true today that you just testified earlier? First, you testified that one person disagreed with those statements, but then later on in your testimony, you said, "No, two people testified that they, or gave information that they were not afraid or worried about becoming a target or would face retaliation against Mr. Carafa." Isn't that true?
Not exactly. I said that from the beginning and when I was questioning the board in two previous months, I did say that there was one outlier who was not any of those things. And then I said this evening that that's one of the other people I spoke to, although she did not feel that she was a target, she certainly had observed and believed it was behavior, but it wasn't...
You testified that she never observed it, that she just believed it? I believe that.
No, I don't believe, that's exactly, I know that's not what I said.
Yeah. So when you said that each person voiced concern, that's not really accurate, is it?
No, I believe it is.
You just testified that one person that you interviewed didn't, said none of that happened at all. So how could that be accurate?
No, I didn't say it didn't hap, she didn't say it didn't happen at all. She said that she had a good relationship and then she asked me for a job.
Well, then she wasn't afraid. She wasn't terrified. She wasn't scared. Is that right?
Or, or, wait a minute, that's not exactly a fair rendition of what...
Well, you wrote it. You wrote that each person was concerned, they were afraid, they were terrified, they were scared, that he would be angry and that they would face retaliation. You wrote that. And then today, you've testified something different.
Well, actually, I've said it three different times, that there was one person who did not abide by that language and rather than changing this report, I acknowledged it in front of the board in February and in March and also this evening.
Why would you have to change the report, Mr. Pritch? Wouldn't you have written the report after you did your interview? You shouldn't have had to change it. You should have wrote it that way in the first place.
Well, thank you for your edit, yeah.
So that, that leads me to another question, talking about changing the report. Is it true that you completed this investigative summary and you dated it on February 24th, 2020? Is that correct?
That's the day they wrote the letter, yes, sir.
Okay. And yet you didn't call Mr. Carafa to get his side of these issues until, or actually, you didn't email him, you said. You emailed him on February 29th, but you didn't actually get a chance to talk to him until March 2nd, regarding these, isn't that correct?
No, I never said I emailed him on February 29th. You've just added that. I never said that.
Well, you did, I believe you did refer to it. It is accurate. I have emailed the board a copy of those emails that you sent him on February 29th. If I read it to you, it might jar your memory.
No, sir, I'm not going to have you read into the record something I did not testify to or state. What I did do is I contacted Mr. Carafa twice by cell phone. I left messages, I texted him. He explained that he had deleted those accidentally and out of sheer frustration, I did email him on February 29th. And that's...
Okay, so you did, okay. And so, but you talked to him on, on March 2nd, is what you testified to earlier, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
All right. So we did, you did email him on the 29th and you did talk to him on March 2nd. Now, you talked, is that your normal course of investigative skills to come up with an investigative summary, write it all out, gather all these, these alleged facts, make some wild conclusions, and then talk to the subject seven days after you complete the report? Is that your normal investigative technique?
I don't agree with your question, but the premise of your question in terms of wild accusations, considering the statement of the accused, seeing I had an eight-page detailed statement, but I did follow up with him on March 2nd.
But the issue here is, though, that eight-page statement that dealt essentially with the, the complaint that dealt with pounding on the table, you know, and that he raised his voice, that was the essential aspect of the, and also the alleged incident where, and I guess it's admitted that, that he had to, I guess, correct, but not exactly correct, but at least get a classroom back on topic while a class, a teacher, while he was performing an observation. That was the substance of the complaint. And so all of these issues that you brought about former employees and teachers and this retaliation and this intimidation, none of that really, you know, was a part of the complaint per se. And so, um, I guess my question would be that, that you have come up with a conclusion in a investigative summary report and you didn't talk to the actual respondent, the accused, until seven days after you came up to his, with your conclusions? You don't find that to be problematic?
Sir, I don't believe that it was appropriate for you to claim that this was not part and parcel of his response. He was accused of harassing, bullying, harassment, intimidation. He, in his eight-page statement, made it...
My question to you, ma'am, was is that your normal investigative technique to talk to the respondent and interview the respondent seven days after you complete the conclusion? Is that what you normally have done in your nineteen years of investigation, as you stated earlier?
I didn't say that. Pardon me?
I was just wondering if you could finish your answer.
I would like to, but...
I would like her to finish the answer to the question I asked. Not, she's already had an opportunity to, to answer in the open. I'm asking a very direct question, specific question.
Well, I guess, I've been an attorney for thirty-two years and conducted a multitude of examinations and investigations and depending on the actions claimed or the misconduct alleged or the circumstances surrounding all of the events, each one is approached a bit differently. So if your question is, is this typical, I would have to tell you that they're all pretty unique. If I was talking about a criminal case or if I was talking about a case where due process was key in terms of the statutory protection, there might be some things that some people would do differently. But as far as was this a full, fair examination? Was this an opportunity to be heard? And did I collect information as requested? I did. And to ensure that it was fair, even beyond what I think was necessary, I did speak with Mr. Carafa. And in fact, I did state it here in front of the board today, exactly, some of the things that, you know, as we spoke and the kinds of questions I asked, and I did allow him to be very clear. And in fact, I think he said that by talking to me, he was going to be able to put a little bit of life into this story. But I did ask him if it was true when he wrote it, was it true the same day? You know, was it true then? Is it true now? He advised me at once. And then he continued to reassert that he was open and that he had a great relationship with everybody. So it gives me...
Did you ask him any questions about the five female teachers that have left?
Pardon me?
After, the seven days after you completed your investigation, did you ask him any questions about the female teachers that left?
I asked, I asked him if there was anybody that he knew of that had left, you know, because of the way he treated them. And he said, "No," that he had heard that, that he had never heard that at all.
Did you ask him anything about, about teachers saying that he targeted them?
Pardon me?
Did you ask him anything about, any questions about whether or not you believed or that teachers had said that they, they felt he targeted them?
I asked him whether or not he had ever heard or that had, had he any reason to suspect that people left because of his management style or because of his, his forcefulness or anything like that? And he said, "No, no teachers..."
Well, he denied that and, and the other, a few other teachers maybe, maybe say that, we don't know. And how did you, what, how do you take one person's statement over another's?
Well, because we look at credibility, we look at...
So Mr. Carafa's not credible? Is that your statement today?
Well, if you're not going to let me answer...
Okay.
Everybody assess who they believe. They look at the circumstances surrounding the event. They look at what statements tend to prove or disprove someone. You look at the interest in the outcome. You look at the method of disclosure. You look at who has any special reason to tell the truth. Does any person have any special reason to lie? Or perhaps is there a disconnect between how they present themselves in certain settings? And then you try to determine what facts it is that you believe and that's how everybody makes a decision about...
Well, I've read your investigative summary and I'm still looking for a fact in it. I can't find a fact in here.
Well, that's unfortunate that you can't find them because there's plenty.
Okay. What fact is in here? Give me one example of a fact that you cite that's provable.
Well, I guess, what do you mean by...
What emails do you have in support of this? What videos do, you said that he, he gave them in videos. What videos do you have to support this? What physical actions did they, they say they did, other than pounding on a desk that he adamantly denies?
He denies that he never at any time, in any circumstance...
That's not the question. The question I asked was what evidence you found, what facts you found that was provable? What emails? What files?
No, I don't need to have those and, sir, you're really out of line. You know darn well as an attorney that the only evidence is not through a video or the evidence that counts is a smoking gun. And as an attorney in your training, I would certainly hope that you know that. That's exactly evidence.
So you said that one of the comments that you heard was that people would come up to him and say good morning, some teachers would come up to him and say good morning, and that he would ignore them, is that correct? That was one of the facts that you were able to learn, that he would look at him and ignore the good morning? Not acknowledged?
That was mentioned, yeah.
Okay.
A lack of relationship with the staff will...
That's not, that's not the question I asked. The question I asked was about the good morning and that he would, that people would ask. So what their statement was, that they walked up to him and they said, "Mr. Good morning, Mr. Carafa," and he would refuse to answer. He would just walk right on by, is that correct?
No, that's not what I said. I said that the pleasantries and how are you, how was your weekend and those interpersonal interactions, that he did not do that. And he'll cite it that as part of, depending on the mood he was in, his willingness to engage with his staff.
No further questions.
Okay, thank you. Is Brad Goodme with us right now?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Goodme, hi, Roy Anlife, talked a few times on the phone. Do you have, did you complete a final evaluation for Mr. Carafa for the 2019-2020 school year?
A final evaluation had not been done for this year. We've done all the...
Have you done any kind of evaluative document dated February 6, 2020?
Yes, a mid-year review is done.
Okay. So that was the mid-year review. And you rated Mr. Carafa on a scale of one to four in various...
Yes, sir.
And can, is it four highest, one lowest?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And the two would normally be considered on the scale marginally effective, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a copy of the mid-year review in front of you?
I do.
Okay. Let's go to domain two.
Yep.
The first line says envision, which you evaluated Mr. Carafa as a number two, correct?
That is correct.
Why did you... Uh, why did you do that?
Uh, you know, that was, that was more of a district concern that we have. We are working our way through a strategic plan, so as a district and as a building, we did not have a real set, or a clear set vision, vision or mission for them. So, that was, uh, that was just something that we are working on together.
Okay. Uh, below that, there's another, uh, entry, values, beliefs, principles, and diversity, for which, uh, Mr. Carafa also was evaluated a two, correct?
That is correct.
Why did you evaluate it?
Um, one of the, one of the big things there, um, in that domain, under that factor, it talks about the expectations for staff and modeling their behaviors. Um, there's been some concerns that, um, he was not quite modeling the behavior we expected from our staff.
And why was that?
Uh, demeanor, openness to, uh, staff input.
And by demeanor, how was his demeanor lacking?
Uh, the conversations I've had with staff is that he's not receptive when it's something that contradicts kind of what his thoughts are, or, um, you know, the, the thoughts that he had in mind or planned in place.
Okay. And are there any other reasons that you evaluated him as a two in that area?
Yeah, I'm just looking through my notes, um... So, that, that was the, the one that stuck out to me for sure.
Okay. Also, in domain two, he received a two as fair, legal, honest, and ethical, correct?
Uh, that is correct.
And why was he evaluated as a two in that area?
Uh, again, you know, that, to me, was talking about some of his demeanor, and, um, having some staff concerns, questioning whether or not, uh, you know, what he's being told, or his sharing with them ends up happening, or being very truthful.
Okay. And, uh, do you have any specifics to support that conclusion?
Um, nothing, no.
Okay. Uh, domain four, under processes, uh, you also rated Mr. Carafa as number two in communications, correct?
Uh, communications, yes, that is correct.
And why did he, uh, get a number two rating there?
Um, excuse me one second, just kinda going through my notes again here. Again, this is, uh, talks about, um, when I was looking at it, was, uh, the interaction kind of with staff and the communication with staff. Um, I, I felt like he was doing a better job with parents, he's been sending out more information to the parents, uh, but getting that two-way communication with staff is where we are, um, staff did not feel like they're always being heard.
Okay. And when you say they don't feel like they're being heard, what do you mean?
Again, it's just that, I mean, they're questioning something, um, that it's, it's not valued or taken into consideration.
Okay. Um, is a number two marginally effective, adequate performance for the Memphis Community Schools?
No, it is not.
Uh, why is that?
You know, we're always expecting, um, our, our staff to be, um, effective or highly, so what we're looking at is the three and fours. Um, we know that that highly effective is very, very difficult to, um, maintain because of the high expectations there, but the effective level that the number three, if you look at it, uh, by a number, is where we should all be. Um, I, I don't think it's, um, normal, or not normal, I guess, to say that some people would have areas that they need to grow in.
Okay. Um, did Mr. Carafa also, um, develop some goals for himself for the 2019-2020 school year?
Yes, he has.
Uh, do you have those goals in front of you?
Uh, yeah, I think I do. One second, let me do out my documents here. I believe they're the ones that, uh, begin one work to become a more effective, that the-
Yes.
Yep, they have those.
Okay. Can you tell me when those goals were developed?
Uh, yes, one second. Um, May of 2018.
Okay. And, um, who developed those? How, how did you go about developing them?
Um, Matt developed some, but it's based on kind of conversations we'd had throughout the year.
Okay. Um, could you tell us what goal number one was?
We'd like the rebuilding.
Uh, or you can paraphrase if you like.
Um, become a more effective, high self-monitoring by evaluating daily communication, so kind of, um, taking in how his demeanor is, um, how he's behaving when he's interacting with staff.
Um, and was that designed to correct any kind of a problem or deficiency?
Um, yeah, just based on the conversations we've had, um, that, you know, that, again, kind of like we talked about in his evaluation, there's some areas that staff was concerned that one approach that, um, his demeanor was not very receptive, and that he wasn't always, uh, seemed to be listening.
Uh, did he deny that, or did he see that as a problem?
Uh, I don't believe he denied it. I, I think it was, you know, again, a conversation we had that he had to work on, uh, that his body language is kind of what he referred to when he talked about it.
Okay. Um, and could you tell us generally what the second goal was?
Uh, increase awareness of daily conversation of others around me, make sure that, uh, any appropriate, inappropriate communications are ended, um, and any inappropriate communications that would be addressed immediately, making sure to put an end to it, and then report anything that he hears to me immediately.
Okay. What sort of, um, inappropriate communications did that reference?
Uh, I believe that one was in reference to a, a situation we'd had earlier in the year, um, with the college advisor, a conversation that took place in the, um, the staff lunch, or, yeah, lunchroom, staff lounge.
Okay. Uh, was there some sort of issue with Mr. Carafa appropriately dealing with communications and statements made in the workplace?
Yeah, a conversation was taking place at, um, I guess, we're kind of sexually in orientation, um, there is, I believe there's three individuals in the room, um, and it was, um, not put it to an end when it took place, it was a conversation that him and I had about it.
And, uh, did that result in any discipline to Mr. Carafa?
Yes, it did.
And what kind of, uh, discipline?
Uh, that was a one, uh, one day unpaid, I believe. I'm just wanting to make sure and accurate on that. Um... Sorry for, I'm a little slow here. Um... I'm not finding that exec letter right here. Okay, I'll just find it. I'm sorry, I, I'm not finding it.
Okay. Would it be fair to say that the discipline involved Mr. Carafa's involvement in the conversation where racially and sexually discriminatory comments were being made?
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, and then there's goal number three, uh, from May of 2018.
Mr. Henley, the last comment, it was not racially, it was all, um, I believe it was all sexually oriented.
Okay, okay. Um, then let's move on to goal number three. Can you tell us what that was?
Uh, work with Memphis Administration to develop a universally known 100% safe reporting mechanism for all employees, um, frequent discussions about zero tolerance for inappropriate behaviors, and giving everybody the ability to express the need for help.
Okay. And were there any issues with Mr. Carafa's performance in that regard?
Uh, no, I think that was tied into the, kind of the same incident.
Oh, okay. Um, based upon your mid-year review of, uh, Mr. Carafa on February 6th, um, did he make any sort of substantial improvements or growth in terms of his demeanor, behavior, and interpersonal relations?
Um, he, he had made some efforts to improve, um, you know, I think there's things that he was doing to help them. Um, I, I don't know that it completely, or I do not believe it completely corrected any of the, the issues that we were having, um, but we had developed a plan back in, I think, January, December, January, of some things that he could do, you know, try to initiate some conversations with staff, to try to do some of those more personal level conversations that he had been doing, um, working to improve that.
As you were trying to gain improvement in those respects, did Mr. Carafa ever tell you that this wasn't an issue as far as he was concerned?
Uh, no, no, he was very receptive to it, um, and, you know, again, we were trying to, to work through them together, um, you know, just to, to find ways to help everybody's perception. Um, we had a lot of conversation of, you know, what it'd be, because it is a staff perception, um, so...
Uh, did he ever suggest that he was being set up, or that people were lying about him?
Uh, no.
Okay. Um, I understand that you also did a staff survey during the 2019-2020 school year?
Yes, yes, we did. Or I did.
Um, did that survey contribute to, uh, your work with Mr. Carafa and his mid-year evaluation?
Uh, yeah, it, it, it did. Um, you know, from the, the survey, we, um, gathered a bunch of information, information with him, and then we sat down together to develop some separate, I don't know if you want to call them goals, but more of some different tasks he could do, uh, to make sure that, uh, he could increase those relationships and morale.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I think that's all I've got. Mr. Henley?
Mr. Goodme, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Um, can you take a look at this, uh, the evaluation that you performed and signed on February 6, 2020 for Matthew Carafa?
Yes, sir.
Um, at the top of it, it says principal final evaluation, doesn't it?
Um, yes, it does.
Okay. Now, uh, that's all, Mr. Goodme?
I'm just on the reading-
Goodme, I'm in question pause. It says principal final evaluation, is that correct?
It says principal evaluation, school is at 2.02, 2017, so it's-
Okay, so you created this form in 2017, is that correct?
No, it has the wrong title on it.
Oh, okay. Um, and when it says school year though, it says 2019-2020, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. You're Mr. Carafa's immediate supervisor?
I am.
Okay. Um, what is the range of scoring that a principal or administrator would have to get overall to be effective?
2.5 to 3.4.
And what was Mr. Carafa's, uh, overall performance rating in domains two through five?
2.58.
So, he was effective?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, and as a part of being Mr. Carafa's supervisor, um, would it be your understanding to know Mr. Carafa's contract?
Yes.
Are you aware that, that a final evaluation according to contract is due on or before March 30th of each year?
That is correct, I believe, yes. I don't have a correct-
Okay. And this is in the mid-year one, is that correct? That's your, that's your statement today?
That was our mid-year review, that is correct.
Okay. Um, so you were planned on, did you, did you do a final evaluation for him and have him sign it before March 30th?
We did not get that done, no, we did not.
Okay. So, um, really, the only thing we're missing in, in this evaluation, uh, is the domain one, is that correct?
And student growth, student growth, yes.
That's, well, that's student growth is domain one, isn't it?
That's correct. I was just looking-
There's no other domain that's missing, correct?
That is correct.
Based on these allegations, domain one really doesn't have anything to do with any of these other allegations, is that correct?
I, I can't, I don't think I can answer that without the information, I guess if-
Well, you have the information. You've been provided a copy of the investigative summary, Mr. Goodme.
I don't have the student growth, so we did not do that.
Right, but I'm, that's not the question I asked. The question I asked was, the, the investigative summary and the March 23rd, 2020 board resolution dealt with essentially his role as a principal in domains two through five, is that correct?
I'm sorry, you cut out the very end there. That it, it does not have the student growth, but his evaluation shows that he was effective, that is correct.
Well, and, and the board resolution and the investigative summary, those accusations and those allegations, um, really don't deal with, uh, domains two through five, isn't that correct?
That is correct.
That domain one.
That, yes, it does not, well, it could have an impact on one, but it, it's not showing it on that, that mid-year review.
Correct. So, um, really, the only thing that this is missing is domain one, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so, you knew that Mr., uh, Mr. Carafa, you were aware Mr. Carafa had to have his evaluation by contract by March 30th, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you failed to do so, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you, um, when you compiled this performance evaluation, um, you were aware of the complaint, correct?
Uh, this-
Mr. Goodme, obviously miswrote your class header, four dollars of your panel play.
I'm sorry, somebody keeps jumping in. This took place on February 6th, the investigation was ongoing, but that's-
You were aware of it though? At the time-
I was, yes, I was aware of it.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, you're aware of, uh, Board Policy 1422 that says that, um, the, when a complaint is made, that the supervisor of the complaint will, or the person investigating it, the compliant officer, I guess is what they call it, a CEO, uh, will have the investigation completed within fifteen days? You're aware of that policy, is that correct?
That is correct. It is, it says that it's the recommendation part to, and it's in that timeframe.
The letter to you was dated February 24th, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So, that is, uh, month and a half, so forty-five days in that realm, forty-five to sixty days in that realm, is that correct?
I'm not looking at the calendar, but yes, I, I would say it was a month plus.
Okay. Greater than a month, because it was February 9th when the complaint came in, correct?
Um...
Or January, sorry, January 9th when the official complaint was given, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, um, when Mr. Henley asked you under domain two, when it said fair, legal, and honest, and ethical, and you gave him a two for that, and he asked you for specifics, and you said no, is that correct?
I'm looking to-
No, I don't have any specifics for that, is that correct?
Two C three.
What? Yeah, two C three, that's right, yeah.
Thank you. One second, just let me flip to that page. Um, no, I do not have specifics, mark down my notes.
Okay. Yet you gave him a two anyway?
Yep.
Okay. Um, so you had no specific facts, or information that would lead you to that conclusion, is that correct?
I don't have a specific conversation that I can identify, a conversation with staff that there was concerns whether or not the information sharing was always taken as honest or truthful, I guess, and there's just some staff concerns about that. So, no, I do not.
Okay, thank you. That's the answer I was looking for. Um, are you aware of, uh, the, or is it your practice at Memphis Community Schools to have an anonymous survey done by the teachers of the schools, is that correct?
Yeah, I've been doing that, uh, I started three years ago, I believe it was.
So, that is, so during Mr. Carafa's entire tenure, there is, there, they've had that opportunity to do that, is that- opportunity to do that, is that correct?
Yeah, this year I did it in person instead of doing the survey, the anonymous survey.
Okay, and that was done in, in mid-year time?
No, I did that, um, October.
November?
Yeah.
November, wasn't it?
October.
November, I believe?
I, I think November is when I brought the, the findings to.
Right.
But I, I started the, the interview back in October, I was trying to get the timeline to meet with the 47 staff, but I did, took some time.
Now, um, have you, did you look at the 2019 anonymous survey of Mr. Carafa?
So, it'd been the end of the year one, is that what you asked?
Yep. The end of the year 2019 survey?
Yes, I've, I've looked at them.
Okay. Would you agree that the, um, that out of the 23 students, or 23 teachers and staff, uh, faculty at Memphis Junior slash Senior High School, um, that he, when it, when it deals with, my administrator treats me like a professional, you would agree that, that the overwhelmingly, the teachers and staff anonymously believe that he treats them like a professional, is that correct?
That is what it shows there on, yes, yes.
So, some of those earlier statements, that this has been an ongoing issue on some of these things are not 100% accurate, are they?
Uh, well, I didn't get a full response from the survey, so I can't say that, but based on.
Well, 23 of the, how many teachers taught at Memphis Community Schools that year, i- i- in the junior seats slash senior high school?
Well, I interviewed teachers.
No, 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 I'm talking about the 2019 survey, how many teachers were actually there at the school, isn't it true that, that there was only 24 teachers?
24, yes, but that's.
So, 23 answered this survey, correct?
That's, that's, there's support staff that also answered it, it wasn't all just teachers that responded.
Okay, so the, uh, the 23 teachers and support staff, or, uh, uh, 23 of the teachers and support staff gave him a 4.26 and treating them like professionals, is that correct?
No, that's not correct, I show, just on the, what I'm looking at right here is one, two, um, I draw, I show at least three support staff that responded that way.
Right, that's, right, so I said between teachers and, so 20 of the 24 teachers, uh, submitted an answer, correct?
On the document in front of me, I'm showing only 12 teachers, I interviewed 40 and I got 22.
No, I'm talking about the 2019 survey, Mr. Goodme.
That's the one I'm looking at right in front of me, I, I'm telling you what I have in front of me.
I'm gonna email it to you right now.
Okay.
And just for the board information, I did email that to the board, they do have that 2019 anonymous teacher and faculty survey?
Yep, that would have been shared with them.
Well, I emailed it to them, I know I shared it all with them.
Okay.
Yeah.
The one that you, the one that you sent, I'm looking at the one that you sent to the board, that one is actually from 1718?
Okay, that's your statement, we'll, we'll, we'll contradict that later on.
Okay, I'm just, that's the one I.
That's your understanding of it?
That is my understanding, but yes, looking at, the, the, the results are very similar both years.
Okay. So then, that, if the results are similar both years, the statement earlier then, so we're getting back to my original question, Mr. Goodme, and that is, and I did just forward you the, all my exhibits, so you now have them in your email, okay? My first little question was, um, the statement earlier made that there's, that this has been an ongoing issue about him treating people professionally, is it ac, is not accurate based on this survey, is that correct?
Not.
That's not a, that's not a very accurate statement based on this evidence.
Well, not for every teacher that is, that is correct.
Well, I mean, out of these people, fourth, I mean, he rated, by my calculation, it looks like, uh, 13 people gave him a five out of five, not only one person gave him below a three, and one person gave him a one, but it was an average of a 4.26 out of five, that would be, in your opinion, pretty good, wouldn't it?
Yeah, yeah, that's not bad, like I said, out of 40 people responding, yeah, we got it, a half, over half.
Okay, and so, that statement then, again, back to that, my original question, that statement is not 100% accurate because here it shows that those, that that's not in fact supported by the data, does it?
I guess not, no, not, not the way you're looking at it, no.
No, the data does not support that, okay. Um, I have no further questions, well, you know what, hold on one second, I'm, I'll be right.
Sure. Yes, sir.
Um, you heard my discussions with Ms. Churchridge?
I did.
And you were a principal at Memphis High School?
I was.
Um, and during the course of your job as a principal at Memphis High School, you had to, um, interview and conduct investigations?
Um.
Into student discipline, into what happened, this person said that whatever it might be, someone, is that correct? You had to conduct some type of investigation, mostly dealing probably with students, but maybe other things as well?
Yes, student investigation, I have, yes.
Okay, and was it your typical practice to interview the person who was being accused of something after you came to the conclusion of the discipline?
Um, I, no, not for one of the investigations I performed.
In your investigations, you would interview the person being accused first, wouldn't you?
Uh, the one.
Or, sorry, not first, but before you came to a conclusion, before you decided on a disciplinary act, you would in, you would interview both the complainant and the respondent, or the accused, correct?
When I did investigations, yes, I did.
Yeah, it would be abnormal, in your opinion, to interview a student who was accused of doing or undoing at, until after you, you decided to discipline for him?
For a student, sure, yes.
Well, but it'd be indifferent for a teacher, if a teacher was accused of something, and you had it looking at, you wouldn't, wouldn't you talk to that respondent first? Or, or before you decided on a course of conduct with the, with the teacher?
I, I think you're trying to get me to say that the way it was handled is inappropriate, but I, I don't feel it was inappropriate, we had a.
So, so it was you then, let me ask you this question, if you were the one being accused, once you wanted to be, be interviewed before, is that true, when you wanted to be interviewed before the conclusions were made?
I, I don't, it depends if my statement, uh, if I provide a written statement or not.
I mean, uh, isn't it true that Matthew, uh, consistently asked you about, uh, updates and whether or not he could talk to Jean about what was going on and, and, and find out what was happening with this complaint?
We had conversations quite often, trying to keep them in the loop, yes, him and the complainant, we tried to keep them in the loop what was going on.
Okay, so he was interested in talking about it and, and getting this result, correct?
Yes, he was very interested.
He was, he was interested in talking to Jean and, and giving, giving his side of the story, correct?
Yeah, I believe so, from my talk.
Okay, so now I'm gonna put you back into his shoes.
Okay.
You have been investigated, you've been accused of something, and you, uh, have been gone to your immediate superior and asking repeatedly to talk to the investigator to give your side of the story, and then the investigator comes up to a conclusion, and then they ask you the question, do you feel like you, you've received a fair deal in that regard?
No.
Thank you, no further questions.
Okay. I've got a couple, uh, to follow up, Mr. Goodme, um, does school district policy allow you to delegate investigations?
Yes, it does.
Did you have any concerns with how Ms. Churchridge handled the investigation?
None whatsoever.
Do you feel that Ms. Churchridge, uh, treated Mr. Carafa unfairly in any way?
No, I don't believe so.
Do you believe that Mr. Carafa got to, uh, tell his side of the story?
Yes.
Why is that?
Uh, he provided a statement addressing allegations in the conversation with Ms. Churchridge.
Um, have executive orders from the governor impacted how the district does personnel evaluations this school year?
Very much.
How have they impacted that?
Um, the ability to complete them without, you know, obviously being observing, um, the governor's also reduced or, I guess eliminated the requirement to do formal end-of-the-year evaluations.
And that's because of the situation we're in now, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Did you have any concerns at all about the accuracy of the survey that you did, that we talked about?
Um, again, it's just, you know, not getting everybody's responses is always difficult. Um, you know, that's, that is why I went from the, um, anonymous online survey to doing the one-on-one conversations.
Okay. And, uh, if you could just tell us so it's clear, how many respondents did you get or responders, how many did you not for, uh, for this, for this year's survey?
So when I did, uh, face-to-face?
Yes.
Forty, I believe it's 47 teachers I met with.
Okay.
Yes, 47, um, 24 in the high school.
24 in the high school, and how many, uh, total teachers are there in the high school and junior high?
24.
Okay. Um, and then you met with the number of staff members who aren't teachers as well, correct?
Um, for that survey, I did not, this one was just teacher, um, interviews.
Okay, so you, you didn't get feedback from non-teachers?
We did, I did not with that one.
Okay. And, uh, based on the survey results that you've got, um, you believe that the conclusions that you've made in your mid-year evaluation and otherwise are accurate, correct?
Yes.
Um, were there any statements made by teachers that caused you concern in terms of whether they were being fully candid with you?
Um, yes and no, I, I, I think a lot of them, I, you know, I've been in the district for quite a few years, so I have a pretty good relationship with, uh, most of my staff. Um, I, you know, when I was talking with them, they, all of them did question whether or not they would be named or they'd be identified, and I, you know, I did not release names to anything, um, but overall, I, I felt like the, the staff was, um, honest with me.
Um, did it concern you at all that they were asking whether or not they would be named?
Um, it is concerning, um, and I guess understandable, I don't think anybody wants to put their name to anything that identifies them.
You know, for lack of a better word, did any teachers hedge their answers?
I guess, I, I don't know what you mean by that.
Um, you know, were they at all less than straightforward or qualifying answers or appear uncomfortable to you?
No, I, I think when, you know, I was sitting down with a person and chatting with them for, you know, I turned to you 15, 20 minutes ago, I, I felt like we were able to get some things out, and, you know, I, I felt like they did trust that this information shared would not be identifiable.
Okay. Uh, thank you, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Mr. Goodme, I have some redirect questions?
Sure.
For, uh, Ray Cross, I guess you should say, um, would you, do you believe that it's, that a, a teacher, that it's natural for a teacher or any person maybe to be hesitant when, uh, being asked direct questions about their, their boss and getting their name out there?
Yeah, yeah, I, I said that.
That's a natural, that's a natural tendency.
Yeah.
So, uh, under some of this, um, the board resolution and in this investigative summary, uh, a part of that can definitely be attributable to a natural human tendency, would you agree? That people might be reluctant to answer some of those questions?
Yeah.
Bad mouth their boss to a stranger?
I think they could be reluctant, and that's, you know, but we, they still got a lot of truthful answers even though they've kinda had that concern.
Okay, well, you did, and it remains to be seen whether or not Ms. Churchridge did, um, so, I mean, it's possible that you did, but I, I haven't seen that report, so it's hard for me to gauge that. Um, now, the, you, you said that you used this, this evaluation is an old evaluation that you gave him, is that correct?
Um, the title on the form is an old evaluation, the, the evaluation is the one that we've adopted for this year, it's the school.
You used, you used this evaluation in, in Mr. Carafa's first year? This evaluation form was being used in his first year?
This is the 2.0, this is the newer version of the same, um, school advance tool.
So it's a, it's the 2.0, the 2017 version, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Not necessarily that the wrong year is on it, or the wrong heading is on it, it's an accurate heading, it is the 2.0.
Yes.
So this would then be the, it's finally, you invented this to be his final evaluation, didn't you?
No, I did not.
Even though you knew that, you had to have it done by March 30th, is that correct?
Yeah, we, we called it a mid-year review.
And you had the principal final evaluation on it, and you told him that this was his final evaluation, didn't you?
I did not tell him that it was his final evaluation, no.
No further questions?
Uh, just a, just a couple of quick ones, Mr. Goodme, would it be fair to say that, uh, the mid-year review was based on teacher input among other things, including your own observations?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, let me just ask once more, is Kathy Kretich on the line? No, Kathy Kretich, anywhere? Don't think so, okay, well, with, uh, with that, uh, I don't think administration has any more witnesses to present.
Well, I have some witnesses to present.
Sure.
You guys, uh, I guess I will begin by, uh, calling Matthew Carafa. Can everyone hear, hear us? Brad, can you hear us? I hear you, Matt's, Matt's not, not loud.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you very well, Matt. You wanna go upstairs? I'm gonna have Matt go to a different part of the, uh, residence here, and he's gonna take his computer and we'll do it that way. Just give me a minute, please.
Okay, Mel, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Brad, can you hear, Brad, can you hear him?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Mr. Carafa, why don't you, uh, uh, state your, uh, your role and how long you've been there?
Uh, I am the principal at Memphis Junior Senior High School, uh, this is, uh, currently where my third school year as principal, I've been there since, uh, 2017.
Okay. And during your time there, have you, uh, or have you had an opportunity to read the investigative summary, uh, prepared by Jean Churchridge?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And, um, one of the allegations therein or conclusions that she reached, uh, in one of the March 23rd allegations, board resolution allegations, is that you have retaliated or you have intimidated, uh, teachers. Have you done any acts ever, uh, to, in retaliation or in, uh, intimidation of employees, students, staff members, faculty, or community members?
Uh, no, sir, that's not my practice as a professional as administrator, I've never, um, even, um, you know, that's never been a part of my, my administrative role is to, you know, to, um, retaliate against someone for anything.
Um, regarding the complaint against you, um, the teacher, uh, states in her complaint that you pounded on a desk, when was, when was, when did she say that happened?
Uh, we had a, a discussion at the end of last school year, so in, it would have been June of 2019, I believe, uh, the end of the 1819 school year, we had a discussion about, uh, just performance.
I believe, uh, the end of the eighteen-nineteen school year, we had a discussion about, uh, just performance, um, and that's where she alleges that occurred.
Did you ever, did you ever pound on your desk?
No, sir.
Did you ever raise your voice?
No, sir.
Um, isn't it, isn't it true that you actually marked, or you gave her a performance evaluation that year as effective?
Yes, sir.
And in fact, in her complaint, doesn't she say that, uh, you gave her effective rating and then after that you pounded on your desk? Isn't that what she said?
Yes, that's what she, that's what she states.
Does that make any sense to you?
No, it does not, sir.
Now, the, part of the, uh, testimony by Ms. Sturtrich was that she learned that you were unwilling to try and help this teacher become a better, more effective teacher. Is, is that accurate?
Uh, I believe that's what I heard her say.
Is that accurate, is that, is that a true statement?
Oh, no, that is not true, no. I offered, I offered this teacher, um, my support or, or, um, some ideas that I had on multiple occasions, including that, that day in June, and then multiple times, um, to start the school year this year in, in September, and even, I believe, in October as well, and maybe even as far, as late as December, when we had discussions with Mr. Goodman and, uh, the union rep.
Did you ever receive emails from her?
Uh, I have in the past, yes.
And what are some of the contents of those e-mails?
Um, some of the past emails I've received from her prior to this, prior to any discussion of, uh, IDP were, you know, "Thank you for your leadership, uh, you're a great leader, I appreciate all you do for us", um, to those effects. I did send those to, uh, I did include those in my report to Mrs. Sturtrich and to Mr. Goodman.
Those are statements made by the complainant that stand in stark contrast to her, uh, later complaint. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And the complaint was how many months approximately after this alleged incident took place?
Uh, probably about eight or so.
Okay, so the complaint was, allegedly, you pounded on your desk in June of two thousand nineteen. The complaint was in January, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Twenty, twenty?
Yes, sir.
And, um, what was the, what are your, what are the surrounding other facts that, that, that surround that com, this complaint against you by this teacher?
Um, I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, I mean, uh, why, why would she wait seven months to make a complaint? I mean, in the board policy, I believe it says, uh, the recommendation is within, when something occurs, that the, the complainant make a complaint within thirty days of the alleged incident. It's what the board policy states. Why would they, would she wait seven months to make such a complaint?
Yeah, that I, that I don't have an answer to, I don't know. I was actually kind of surprised when I saw stuff like that even come up, because I, again, it was, the, the, the conversation we had took place last year, but that alleged incident never happened.
Right, and, uh, did you have to, um, did you provide an IDP for this teacher?
I did, um, I spoke with.
When did you, when did you present her with the IDP?
Uh, that was in, I'm going to say December of two thousand nineteen, so just before we left for Christmas break, I spoke to Mr. Goodman about it, my plans to, uh, have the IDP created. He was supportive, um, I showed, shared it with him prior to, uh, talking to this teacher. He was supportive, as a matter of fact, he did tell me it's one of the best written IDPs he's seen. Um, and, you know, I spoke with the union representative also about it, and there was support all, all around for that IDP.
And then when you came back from Christmas break, boom, there was a complaint?
Yes, I think it might have, yes, I, yeah, when I came back, it, because we came back in the sixth or something like that, so it came right after we got there.
Okay, so it was very shortly after the IDP came around that she made this complaint from seven months ago, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so is it your interpretation that the complaint was in retaliation to you, uh, assigning a IDP to that teacher?
Uh, I, I believe that's a possibility, yes.
Okay, um, I'd like to direct your attention to, uh, well, did you, did you, um, was part of your issue processes at Memphis High School to allow the staff and faculty, teachers, to provide an anonymous survey of you and your, your capabilities?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Was part of your processes, uh, to allow the teachers to rate you anonymously on a score of one through five at the end of the school year?
Well, that wasn't, that wasn't my, that wasn't my process, but Mr. Goodman did use that process, I believe, my second year and then this year as well.
Okay, and I emailed you a copy of, you provided to me a, a copy of the two thousand nineteen, or two thousand eighteen slash two thousand nineteen, Dawn at the end of two thousand nineteen, survey, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, um, in that survey, the, one of the questions was, "My administrator treats me like a professional. Five would be the very best, one would be poor", is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you had an overall rating of four point two-six, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Um, well, another one of the questions was, uh, "I feel comfortable going to my administrator with my concerns", is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you received a three point nine-one out of five on that question, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
And you would consider that to be a high score?
I would, I would round it up to four, yeah.
Okay, and, um, approximately ten teachers rated you a perfect five out of five out of that, didn't they?
Uh, I believe so, yeah.
And, um, another question was, "My administrator cultivates a positive relationship among faculty members at this school", is that correct?
Yes.
And you received a three point eight-two out of five on that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
How would you term, for the most part, these scores when you looked at them?
Um, when I look at them, I, I felt that, um, they were, you know, reasonable scores. I felt that, you know, four out of five is, uh, to me, considered, uh, in the effective range, um, and I did not feel that there was, that there's, you know, they were poor enough for, for much concern.
Did you receive any score less than a three? Any overall score, any overall score less than a three?
I do not believe so, no.
You did not, very good. Now, does that evidence, how do you feel, was that evidence presented to, uh, Mr. Sturtrich?
I don't believe that ever was, no.
Okay, um, what, one of the, uh, board resolutions states that Mr. Crawford inappropriately corrected a professional employee in the presence of students.
Yeah.
Can you tell me a little bit about the, uh, about this allegation? Is that true?
Um, no, I would not consider that to be a true statement.
Tell me what happened.
Um, there was a, uh, I was in the classroom on, um, observation, uh, walkthroughs, which we do, five-minute, ten-minute walkthroughs per, for teachers, four to six times per year. Um, during my observation, I began to feel uncomfortable about a, the topic that was being discussed by teacher and student, and I asked that the, the, um, topic be redirected towards what it was supposed to be, and, uh, that was pretty much the extent of it at the time.
What was, uh, some of the background that was going on in the school at that time, in December of two thousand nineteen?
Uh, we had just, we had just had a, uh, an incident with, uh, students making, uh, writing threats towards other students in the school on some paper, um, that was kind of just, had just occurred prior to this, uh, uh, this incident you're talking about.
And would you term this as a kill list?
Yes, I would.
And was this information widely circulated among the teachers and students at Memphis?
Yes, everybody was aware, uh, staff was aware, uh, most, most of the students were, but I can't say for sure if they all knew, but.
And in the classroom, when you were in this observation, you, uh, the teacher allowed pictures of guns to be, um, shown on the, the, in front of the classroom, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And the discussion was about how to conceal and hide a gun, is that correct?
Yeah, how to carry, how to conceal, uh, where, where people carry it, where women carry guns, um, bullets, carrying bullets in the school, because they do get in trouble for having bullets, um, those are the kind of discussions. Um, I, I, they discussed, uh, pink handguns and never having, ever seen them before, so they wanted to see a pink handgun look like, and, and they started, so a, a student actually went to the computer and brought up pictures of handguns and displayed them, and they were talking about each one, saying how cool some of them looked and how they hadn't seen them like that before and things like that.
And, uh, how was that, how was the conversation about concealing guns, ammunition, showing pictures of guns? How was that making you feel as an administrator and principal of Memphis Schools?
Uh, I was more than uncomfortable. As a matter of fact, one student tried to get me to participate by asking me if, if he brought, uh, if his mom brought in bullets to school, would I arrest her or have her arrested? And I, and I chose not to participate with that, and I chose not to interject at the time, uh, but that's when I really started to feel, uh, uncomfortable about the whole situation.
And, um, did you notice that some of the students were also feeling somewhat uncomfortable regarding this conversation?
Um, I could, I could tell there were some, I mean, they were all looking at me. I mean, during the, through the course of the conversation, students would shoot a glance at me and look at me like, "Is he going to say something? Is anyone going to do something about this?"
And, um, was this a gun safety class that she was teaching?
No, this is not, this is an English class.
And was there any connection between this content and the English curriculum?
Uh, not that I was aware of, not that I'm aware of.
Now, one of the allegations, uh, made, um, or statements made prior is that you had an, an, a situation early in your career at Memphis where two adults were engaging in a, uh, inappropriate conversation. Can you tell me about that?
Uh, geez, that was my first year, um, it was, um, after lunch at some point. Administrators typically, we usually would eat after the lunch periods. Um, I was in the back room with, uh, another administrator, and, um, we were having lunch, and, uh, a college advisor came in and started to talk about an upcoming interview, uh, that we, her and I were going on for a new college advisor, and, um, uh, the other administrator and all began to make some comments about, you know, I guess that I would deem sexual in nature, um, about the candidates, uh, that they were interviewing, um, or that we would be interviewing, and the criteria for those candidates based on, um, I guess, I don't know if they passed practice, but based on how, you know, they used to hire at Memphis or something of that nature, um, and the two were going back and forth with the conversation and kind of laughing, and they were both having, you know, they're, having a conversation that looked like they were, they were both, you know, okay with the content. Um, you know, it was my first year, uh, that individual had been there, uh, the administrator had been there for quite some time, and, uh, the college advisor had been there for a year prior, so they had a, a relationship that I, I, I was, I figured they had a really, a relationship that I, you know, just wasn't aware of, um, so I did not immediately speak up at the time.
Were you comfortable with the conversation?
Uh, I was, I was, but I, again, I was just kind of playing off of what I saw. They were both talking and laughing with each other, uh, about it, um.
Were you participating in that type of conversation with that?
Not, not with the, not with the stuff about, um, anything to do with our hiring process. Um, the only thing I did say is I asked her if she voted for Hillary or for Obama, because they just did the, uh, I believe it was the Democratic primary or something like that just happened, and I did ask that, and I was told I couldn't ask, you know, political, sort of that type of political, yeah.
All right, and so you were not participating in the conversation, but you did not step in, is that correct?
That is, that is true. I did leave, I did leave the area, you know, after a few minutes of that conversation, I left there.
Okay, and that was two adults, correct?
Yes, sir.
And, um, part of the, the discipline was that you were to intercede in any type of inappropriate conversation moving forward. Is that your understanding of what you're, you were tasked to do?
Yes, sir, it was one of, one of the goals of Mr. Goodman, it laid out there for me was to, you know, stop any of those inappropriate conversations, be more aware of conversations around the workplace, um, in the future.
And so when you encountered a conversation that you found to be unrelated to the content of English class, was inappropriate, was causing anxiety in students and maybe, and definitely unease in yourself, um, what did you do?
I, I inters, I interjected myself into the conversation. I, 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 I knew that it had to stop, and I just, I felt it was, as a principal, I had to, had to stop the conversation to redirect, redirect it towards the work.
And you pounded on the desk when you did that?
No, sir.
Did you stand up?
No, sir.
Where were you sitting in the classroom?
Uh, I was, if, uh, if you walk in, I was, um, if you're looking in from the front of the classroom, I guess, I was in the, uh, rear, uh, at a desk in the rear right-hand side of the classroom, if you're looking.
A student desk?
Yes, sir.
Did you raise your voice at the teacher or the students?
I only said what I said loud enough so they can all hear me. Um, I had my laptop with me on my desk, I raised my hand, and I said that, uh, excuse me, this is an inappropriate conversation. I asked the students to take the guns off the screen, and I said, "Let's get back to the reading where we're supposed to, reading to the, the chapter or whatever it was, let's get back to the book that you're supposed to be reading."
Based on the circumstances, the facts behind what was going on in the school at the time, the inappropriate nature of the conversation that was unrelated to the content of the English class, do you believe you acted in, uh, in accordance with your mandate from Memphis, uh, school board?
I believe I did.
Do you believe you did your duty?
I believe I did.
If that, a situation like that appeared again, would you do the same thing?
I would.
Is one of your first jobs to protect the students at Memphis Community School the most vulnerable?
Yes, sir, it is. I take, I do take that very seriously.
Um, another one of the allegations is that you become emotionally agitated over disagreements with staff. I'm not exactly sure what that means, uh, because it's very, very vague, and there hasn't been a lot of testimony regarding that today, uh, so I'm not sure exactly where that came from, but would you like to comment on that at all?
Uh, I, I'd only like to say that, um, you know, in education, we all have different opinions, different ideas, um, and we express those ideas. Um, I don't recall ever becoming, uh, so emotionally irritated with my staff about anything. Most of the things we do, we do together, um, and I, and I would like to reference one thing that, that was mentioned earlier about a two-rating that I received in, uh, an area on vision and mission. Um, that just, there's something I would like to say about that. I received a two, however, in my, my set, my year, my, I believe it was my first year, my, early in my second year, uh, we had the staff rewrote our, our mission and vision for the school. We did it together, um, I had really little part in it, other than saying, asking the staff if they wanted to do that. They all, they agreed they did, um, and that was written by the staff, um, and put together by them. So, so all I did was facilitate the meetings to that, um, so again, that, that's one area where I wouldn't have agreed to it, uh, agreed to that too, and I did, I did tell Mr. Goodman that, um, I think he wrote some notes down about it at the time, but, but there was no, there was no changing any of the numbers at that time. Um, uh, but, but yeah, I mean, to, 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 for me to get that upset about something, um, you know, that's something I, I would deny.
And, um, isn't it true that the, uh, your staff and faculty, um, rated you a three point eight-two under the category, "My administrator cultivates a positive relationship among faculty members at the school"? Isn't that true?
Yes, sir.
So, the data doesn't support this idea that you are, become emotionally agitated, um, because, uh, they gave you a very high rating for creating a positive environment at the school?
I, I, I believe that's correct, um, not only that, um, Mr. Goodman, we also, uh, when I started, we brought in, uh, uh, positive behavior interventions. Positive Behavior Intervention Supports PBIAF System. Um, I'm also a trained, uh, School Restorative Practices Coordinator. Um, so I start my staff meetings with, um, um, uh, discussions with staff that are personal in nature, that are, that are lighthearted, you know, I ask them, you know, what's your favorite song? And how do you feel today? What, you know, uh, can you describe a season in which how you feel? We, we open all of our team meetings with, um, discussions to, to build relationships amongst each other. And that's what I, I preach to them, you know, they'll tell you that, I talk about restorative practices all the time. I'm always talking about making connections and making, making, um, uh, relationships, building relationships with, with each other and, and with students and staff.
Um, uh, another one of the allegations states that a number, or an unusual number of valued employees have resigned from the school while Mr. Carafa has been principal. Would you like to comment on that?
Um, I, I, I'm not aware of an unusual number. Um, there are some individuals that have left, um, for various reasons. Um, and I can't say that, you know, I had anything to do with any of those. Um, I think there's some, some support letters out there that will state that individuals left because of family reasons, because of location, because of money, uh, but I had never heard of that. And, and I really don't think there's an inordinate amount of people, um, in my experience as an administrator and in education, I think it's pretty much, uh, on average or even less, uh, people leaving the district here in Memphis than in other places.
Have you had an opportunity to read the letter from Don Urban?
Uh, yes, I have.
And, um, does she support you as a principal?
Uh, I believe she does, yes, in the letter, yeah.
How about Bonnie Karim?
Uh, Bonnie Karim does as well, too.
How about Holly Keller?
Uh, Holly Keller did support me as well.
How about Jessica Dunsborough?
Jessica Dunsborough as well. She was also Jessica Davis at one time, too, so people might not recognize that name.
Okay, and, um, these were all female teachers that left for better pay, families, location, whatever it might be? Unrelated to you as the principal, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And they've come out with a statement in support of you, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry, what was that?
They've come out with a statement in support of you, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Letters in support of you?
Yes, sir.
Now, um, Mr. Gru- Ms. Gruey, sorry, um, you had an opportunity to hear her, her, uh, interview. Um, tell me a little bit about her as a teacher at, uh, Memphis and what happened there.
Uh, well, Ms. Gruey was a teacher there for a year and then a little bit of the start of the second year when I was there. Spotted a little under a year and a half. Um, and there were, there were some incidents where I did have discussions with her about, uh, a couple of things. One of them was, um, you know, leaving early, per the contract. Uh, there's another time when she, uh, walked out of a, uh, excuse me, left before a staff meeting after hearing the announcements and knowing that we had a meeting.
Did you witness her walking out?
Yes, sir.
So you saw it with your own eyes?
Yes, sir. Uh, as a matter of fact, I believe she went out the senior doors instead of the front doors where, you know, most people would enter and exit out of. Um, there was also, I mean, there was a discussion about, um, it'll, it'll leave students unsupervised either in the hallway or sending them out to the media center for, for work, um, which I didn't think was beneficial to students. Uh, I had some students that were, uh, questioning why that was happening, why they were in the classroom, some parents as well. Um, so I did ask.
Was she putting students out into areas that were unsupervised?
Uh, well, either the hallway or to the media center. Uh, we discussed that. I told her I didn't want that to happen, um, um.
Well, the hallway would be unsupervised.
Yes, sir, yeah. Uh, and I, I, I told her that, we, we discussed that. Um, uh, and she was receptive, uh, some of the times, or I felt that she was receptive.
Did you ever yell at her?
No, sir.
Did you ever physically touch her in any way?
No.
Did you ever raise your voice to her?
No.
Did you ever use your stature to try and intimidate her?
No. We had a discussion, nor, most of the time, if we had a, a, a serious discussion about something, it was in my office and we'd both be seated or, yeah, that, that's the only time a serious discussion would have occurred.
Did you intimidate her in writing, in emails in any way? She alleges that you intimidated her in emails.
I do not, I do not believe that it would be intimidation. It would be something that I would ask about a certain situation or tell her, you know, it has come to my attention, this is happening, I would, I would appreciate if this, you chose to do this instead of something else.
You were in charge of the high school, weren't you not?
Yes, uh, yes, junior and senior high school.
And so part of your job is dealing with teachers and parents who may have complaints about teachers, isn't that correct?
Yes, sir.
And at times you have to discipline students, is that true?
Oh, yes, sir.
And at times you have to discipline teachers if, if something is inappropriate, is that correct?
Uh, there are times that it has to happen and I don't, I don't, uh, I don't really recall very many, if any, actual written reprimands or anything that I've given to anyone at Memphis in the last three years.
Okay, one of the allegations in the, uh, is that, um, you seem to have, uh, in Ms. Sturridge's investigative summary, one of the allegations that you treat female diff- employees differently than you do male employees, kind of saying that you, you gave favoritism to male employees. Um, how many, since you've been there, how many male teachers at the high school level or junior high school level have you hired?
Um, since I've been here, I would say males, I would say three.
And how many females have you hired?
Females, I would say five, possibly six. I think one of them was, uh, I wouldn't consider her to hire, well, we did hire someone, but she did not. She stayed only for like two weeks and just kind of left.
But you hired her?
Yeah, yeah.
So you hired six females to only three males, is that correct?
Sounds about accurate.
And four of the letters that have been provided to you were by female teachers, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All displaying support, never, you know, clearly stating that there was never any chauvinism or, or unprofessional conduct by you, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, um, you've had an opportunity to go through your final evaluation, is that, tell me a little bit about that.
Um, you mean the one from this year?
Yeah, your two thousand twenty final, principal, it says, "Principal Final Evaluation," at the top of it.
Yeah, yeah.
And the board members, I have included that as one of my exhibits. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, we discussed that, uh, in early February, I believe in Ms. Goodme's office.
And was it, was it your understanding that this was your final evaluation?
Uh, we talked about having a mid-year meeting. Um, my, my, um, interpretation of that was that would be my final evaluation since that had never occurred before and I'd only had one prior evaluation, the end of eighteen nineteen. I was rated effective, uh, in my first year. Uh, we didn't have anything official, uh, but I think I also was rated effective, um, at some point in the year, but we didn't have anything official written or any kind of meeting about it. So when we had this meeting in February, my interpretation was this would be our, 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 my final once we got the student growth portion, which is Domain One, I believe.
Okay, so all of this, uh, Domains Two through Five, that was your final evaluation? That's your understanding, those numbers were set, is that correct?
I, I, I interpreted it that way, the way we're signing anything with this, I interpret it that way.
And, um, it's your understanding, according to your contract, that you are required to have a, uh, your final evaluation, uh, given to you in written format on or before March thirtieth, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And, um, obviously there are no state assessments because of what's happening with the coronavirus, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And there's no local assessments, is that correct?
Well, we had, uh, NWDA, uh, we did do, uh, uh, the first two rounds of that, but we do have a third round that we do and, and without the complete cycle, it's not really conclusive data.
Okay, so it would be impossible to complete Domain One, is that your understanding?
Yes, sir.
And, um, by, according to your understanding, Mr. Goodme was aware of this complaint when he completed this final evaluation on Domains Two through Five?
Yeah, well, we even, we discussed it briefly at that meeting. I asked him what was going on, what he heard or what I, what I knew and he said he had heard anything about that.
And, um, is it, you was, it's two point five eight, is that correct? Um, overall on Domains Two through Five?
Yes, yes.
And what, are you understanding, anything between two point five and three point four is effective, is that correct?
Yes, that was my understanding.
So you were effective for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty?
I believe so.
I have no further questions for Mr., uh, Carafa at this time. Well, I guess before I yield to, uh, whichever attorney's gonna ask questions, um, is there anything else you'd like to say, Mr. Carafa, at this time?
Uh, no, I mean, I just, you know, wanna say that, um, you know, I like, I, I love being a principal at Memphis and it's just, um, something that I enjoy doing and I, I pride myself on being professional and, and treating my staff, students and community that way. And I just, just wanted that to be out there on the record.
Is this investigative summary that was performed by Ms. Sturridge a fair and accurate representation of you as a principal?
No, sir, it is not.
Were you given a fair opportunity to respond to this?
Uh, I was, I was allowed to write, uh, the summary, um, in which it continually references a long eight-page summary. Uh, but I was allowed to do that and, uh, I was given an opportunity to speak with Mrs., uh, Sturridge, um, after, at the time I had not known this, but after the, the investigation had been completed.
Okay, and, um, so she didn't tell you she'd already made her conclusions when she spoke to you?
No, when I talked to her on the phone, she kept telling me that she didn't know anything, that's why she was asking me. She wanted to know what I knew, what I thought, most people might be saying about me. Um, and she continued to reference that she doesn't have the answers, she's just a lawyer, she's had to ask the questions. You know, she wanted to know if I had anything else to add or anything else to add to Mrs. Lever's statement. And I asked if, I said Lever, uh, excuse me, if this teacher had made another statement. Um, and she said, well, I don't know, I don't know that, all I have is what you have. And I said, well, I don't have anything, you know, I didn't have anything to go off of anyways. Um, so I just kind of felt like I was being kind of backed through a corner a little bit in that discussion.
And, um, did she ask any questions about retaliatory conduct?
Um, yes, I, if she asked if I believed that I had taken part in retaliation against the staff ever in the past, I believe she asked me that. Um, and again, my answer was no.
And, uh, did she ask any questions about the, um, the former, your former teachers? Don Urban, Bonnie Karim, Holly Keller, Sierra Gru, anyone like that?
She asked if I had ever heard of any leaving because of me and I said no.
Okay. And, um, so, prior to this, uh, conversation on March second, had you ever spoken with Jean Sturridge?
Um, about this case?
Yes.
No.
She never interviewed you before March second?
No.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Roy, you're still muted, if you can unmute. Am I unmuted now? Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Carafa, I've got some questions for you. Um, you were disciplined on May second, twenty eighteen by Mr. Goodme, correct?
Yes, sir, that's true.
And, um, you're aware of the letter in your personnel file because of that, correct?
Yes, sir, I'm aware of that letter.
All right, the letter stated in part, quote, "As the principal, it is your responsibility to set the standard of professionalism in your building, the offensive sexual references, the discriminatory racial comments, the invasive political mentions and the hypocritical mental health remarks, the lack of sensitivity, the allowing of such conversation to occur and your involvement in it warrant a one-day suspension without pay to be served on Thursday, June third, twenty eighteen." Uh, do you recall that being stated in the letter?
Uh, I believe that was, uh, all included there in the letter, uh.
Oh, okay, and, um, did the conversation that was referenced involved or involved getting a college counselor who looks attractive in a bathing suit?
Uh, that is what, yes, the, there was another individual, it's on my own. There's another individual in the, in the meeting with me and that, that was what he was talking about.
Okay, and, uh, based upon that conversation and your discipline, you, um, developed the three goals that we previously discussed with Mr. Goodme, correct?
Uh, well. Yeah, yeah, um, so part of those goals were definitely, uh, based on, I believe it's number two and three of the three goals there.
Okay, and the first one again was to become a more effective, high self-monitor by evaluating daily communication with others, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the second involved, uh, states, "Increase my awareness of the daily conversations of others around me and in the workplace setting. I will be vigilant in my interpretation of potentially inappropriate communications and act swiftly and accordingly when discovering communications that are deemed inappropriate, correct?"
Yes, sir.
Uh, third was work with Memphis Administration to develop a universally known one hundred percent safe reporting mechanism for all employees who, or to report any incidents of inappropriate workplace conduct, uh, correct?
Yes, yeah, and I, I did, I did, uh, that's one of the reasons why I did speak up in this, uh, situation with this teacher this year in October, uh, was because of that, um, excuse me, not October, it might have been in December, uh, the discussion in the English class about guns. That's why I did speak up because of that, uh, discussion that I did have two years prior with Mr. Goodme.
Okay, and, um, an IEP, an Individualized Development Plan, was, uh, formulated for you based on those goals, correct?
An IEP, no, I don't recall ever having an IEP.
Okay, uh, in any event, those were goals that you were to work on over the following year, correct?
Yes, sir, I believe that, uh, goals, all three goals were met, uh, because we did create different goals, uh, the second year and then this year as well, we've had different goals every year. Well, it was, it was two years ago.
And you didn't write anything to Mr. Goodme that said those goals were not warranted or that, uh, you didn't do anything to deserve having those goals placed, correct?
Uh, I don't, I don't, I don't believe so. Um, I did write a, my version of the incident that occurred that day. Uh, I sent to him and I also asked that the, the, uh, the letter be removed from my personnel file after one year of no incidents.
Okay, um, okay, other than that, though, you didn't push back at all regarding the goal or the reason for them, correct?
Yes.
Um, and would it be fair to say that in your mid-year evaluation dated February sixth, twenty twenty, um, the areas in which you appear to be struggling the most relate to communications and interpersonal skills?
Uh, I would say that on that final evaluation you're talking about, I believe that that is what was referenced in there. I don't believe that that is where I struggled, but yes, that is where it was, it was said and stated in there.
Okay, um, and you had mentioned when Mr. Langman was questioning you that now you've had the opportunity to say- that now you've had the opportunity to say everything you wanted to say to the Board of Education, correct?
Yeah, yeah, you know, I just, again, I want...
I think we lost your audio. I'm not sure.
I, I think I, I think I'm going to mute it myself on next minute. Uh, okay. Uh, I was going to say that, um, I, I believe based on those goals and I've done and met every goal that I've been given as administrator to this, to this point, you know? Um, any time that there was something that I had to work on, Mr. Goodme had to work on. But I was not aware of things to be to the level that are stated in Miss Jean Sturridge's, uh, report.
Okay. Would it be fair to say that you're unable to explain the level of complaint against you regarding your behaviors?
Um, I, I, I believe that they are, they are not accurate. I don't believe that they represent me, um, as an individual. I, some of them seem fabricated, um, and I do not know, I do not believe that they are anyway, uh, a reflection of myself as an administrator.
Would it be fair to say that they're consistent? Oh, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
No, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, would it be fair to say that they're consistent with the types of complaints and concerns previously raised about you?
Well, I mean, I would just, I, I, I know that there are other teachers that would contradict from what is said in, in that report. You know, that's what I'm trying to say. And I don't, I don't, again, I'm not aware of those statements being made about me. I do know that there are many other staff members that would say that, uh, those are inaccurate and they have not ever, uh, witnessed me in, in that light.
Okay. Um, that, that's fair enough, but would you say that they're consistent generally with the types of concerns that have previously been raised about you?
No, I don't believe they're consistent.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
This is Bill Langman. Hold on, we got some feedback here. Okay. Is that better? Can everyone hear me? Mr. Hanley, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Mr. Hanley, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
I can hear you because you must be on mute.
Oh, no, but I don't think I am. Let me get all those addresses.
I'm on mute. I'm on mute. All right, there we go. All right, here we go. Um, so I would like to, uh, I'm going to, I'm not going to ask Mr. Caraffa any more questions, but I'm going to recall him. I have a couple of other witnesses that, uh, I'd like to call now and, uh, then I'm going to recall Mr. Caraffa on a, another prom of this, uh, our, our argument to, in favor of renewing his contract, um, at the end. So I'm going to call a couple of witnesses and then I'm going to recall Mr. Caraffa. Uh, right now, I would like to call Beth Phillips. Is Beth Phillips in the audience?
Yes, I'm here.
Beth, are you, uh, can you tell me what your, uh, role is at Memphis Community Schools?
I have been a high school teacher there for twenty-one years. I teach A P classes, psychology classes. I'm also the student council advisor. Um, I've worked on the P B I S committee. I sit on the D S I T committee. And for a short-term time rather, I worked on the school improvement team.
Thank you. Um, and in all of these activities, you're, it sounds like you're a pretty busy teacher, um, have you had an opportunity to work closely with Mr. Caraffa and had an opportunity to, to see him in action as a principal in front of the other teachers, how he treats people, how he treats students, and his role as a principal and educator at Memphis?
Yes.
Can you tell me about his, his performance as a principal at Memphis?
Um, I do have obviously a variety of situations that often call for different kinds of activity, different meetings, different, um, groups of people to work with. And in each situation, I have witnessed nothing but professionalism, um, respect, uh, openness to conversation, um, open to ideas, uh, discussion. Um, and yet, when decisions ultimately had to be made, Mr. Caraffa was able to make a decision and expect those of us to follow it methodically. Didn't necessarily always agree to the nth degree, but that's okay. We made it work. So I, again, in any member of situations, student council in particular, we work very closely with Mr. Caraffa and our student body for homecoming. So that's even a little bit more casual than the academic situation. And he's got a great rapport with, um, the students, from what I can tell. He will entertain any of our ideas and then guide us as to the ones that will work out the best. So, again, I personally have witnessed in my various situations, um, nothing but professional, um, behavior and a willingness to get all the folks involved and put a lot of ideas on the table with also a firm decision-making capability.
Um, one of the comments you just said was that you didn't always agree with Mr. Caraffa. Uh, is that a true statement?
Yes.
And when you disagreed with him, how did he retaliate against you? How did he intimidate you? How did he, what actions did he do to, um, put you down for disagreeing with him?
Absolutely none.
And, um, have you ever, uh, witnessed other people in disagreement or other staff or students in disagreement with Mr. Caraffa?
Have I, have I witnessed it? Uh, probably? I can't say that there's any particular situation that jumped out at me where I saw a major disagreement. I guess I'm just kind of referring to in the daily doings of the day. There isn't always, you know.
That's what I'm referring to. I'm referring to the daily doing of the day as well.
Okay. Then, then, no, I can't, uh, so, no, I cannot say that I have witnessed any overt, um, retaliation or intimidation to which you are referring.
Have you ever seen him pound on a desk?
I have not seen it, no.
Have you ever seen him raise his voice at a teacher?
I have not witnessed it.
Um, have you, uh, ever you seen him use his eyes to intimidate a teacher or a student?
Not purposefully.
All right. Um, he's a big guy. Is that what you're trying to say?
That is true. That is true.
All right. And, um, have you ever witnessed any type of retaliation or intimidation on his behalf directed at any students, staff, yourself included, uh, or community members?
I have not witnessed it nor experienced it, no.
And, um, has he treated you and other staff members and students professionally?
In my experience, yes.
Okay. Have you enjoyed working with Mr. Caraffa?
Yes.
Do you believe his contract should be renewed?
Yes.
Do you believe he's helping to make Memphis Junior slash Senior High School a better school?
Yes, wholeheartedly.
And you've had an opportunity to work with him on T B S? Is that P B I F? I'm sorry, P B I F?
Yes.
And that's something that he brought to this school, is that correct?
Correct.
So you weren't doing this before Mr. Caraffa, is that correct?
Not to this extent, no. There'd always been conversations, but the institution of it and getting it moving has been since Mr. Caraffa has been our principal.
Hold on one second, please, Beth. I'm going to mute myself for one second. I'll be right back to you, okay?
Okay.
Beth, I'm, yeah, Beth, do you have anything else you'd like to add regarding this? About the, the, some of the, I mean, I'm assuming you've had an opportunity to hear the, some of the accusations and allegations against Mr. Caraffa. Uh, do you have any other comments you'd like to say to the board members and general public?
My experience as a staff member has been, as I just mentioned, a very positive, very professional. I am glad to see, as tiring sometimes as it is, just being in education and everything that we must do, um, the programs that have been instituted, I think, under master direction have been incredibly beneficial. I also have two students in the school district, one in the junior high and one in the high school. And so as a parent, I appreciate things that he's done as well to support the students, um, as we go through lots of transitions and such. Uh, my husband owns a business in town, so we're very active in the community and his reputation precedes him in being visible in our community and parades and summer festivals and all of that. So with a lot of different experience, um, I have nothing but admiration and, um, good things to say about him.
Do you believe, based on your knowledge of, of Memphis, that, I mean, one of the allegations is that, that this type of behavior is persistent and consistent with Mr., uh, this retaliation, this intimidation, um, do you believe that, I mean, have you seen or witnessed or do you have any reason to believe that there has been a pervasive issue with Mr. Caraffa at all?
I have not witnessed anything to that degree. I can't speak for any of my other staff members, obviously. I have not witnessed it and I don't interpret it that way.
You've witnessed him in staff meetings on a regular basis, isn't that correct?
Yes.
How often do you guys have staff meetings?
Weekly.
So if there's thirty-six weeks in a year, you've had at least, uh, uh, or in the ballpark of a hundred staff meetings, Mr. Caraffa, is that correct?
Probably, yes.
That's an awful lot of opportunity for you to have witnessed him in front of the staff. Have you ever seen anything that would say that his pounding on the desk, his raising his voice at teachers, his use of intimidation, his introductibility? That's another one of the allegations, that he won't listen to other people's ideas, that it's his way or the highway? Have you witnessed anything remotely close to that?
No, I have not.
I have no further questions. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Hi, Beth, uh, Roy Hanley. You know, I'm sorry, I missed your last name. Could you tell me that again?
Phillips.
Phillips, okay, that's easy enough. Um, Ms. Phillips, you're a, a high school teacher, I believe you said?
Yes.
Okay, and what do you teach?
I have an A P psychology class, an A P English class, a general psychology class, and two freshman English classes.
Wow, so until things got crazy, you were obviously very much full-time, correct?
Yes.
And how many classes per day did you teach?
Five.
Five? And it sounds like you had four preps. Did I count that right?
Yes.
So that's, that's a very busy schedule, correct?
Yes.
Um, and you don't have any administrative responsibilities, right?
No.
And you obviously had a very good relationship with Mr. Caraffa over the years.
Yes.
Uh, but would it be fair to say that you can't speak for everyone else at the Junior Senior High School?
True, I cannot speak for anybody but myself.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
I'd like now, uh, now like to call Josh Esch if he is in the audience. Josh Esch? All right, I'm going to hold off on that. Um, how about Lori Sandborn? Is Lori Sandborn there?
Yes, I'm here.
Lori, uh, are, can you tell me about, a little bit about your role as a teacher in, uh, Memphis Community Schools?
Absolutely. I've been a teacher there full-time, teaching sixth through seventh grade, E L A, sometime social studies in the past for over twenty-six years, three years subbing behind that. I coach, uh, cross-country high school, actually six through twelve cross-country and started the track and field program a couple of years ago too.
And have you, in your capacity as a, uh, teacher and coach, uh, at Memphis, have you had an opportunity to, uh, see and work with Matthew Caraffa in his role as a principal?
Absolutely.
And can you tell me a little bit about Matthew Caraffa's performance as a principal of the Memphis Junior High slash Senior High School?
He is utmost professional. He's ever-present, always in the hallways, outside the school. He's there all the time, working, um, in the classrooms, coming in and out. He started, uh, programs in the lunchroom with the P B I S. He has a great sense of humor. He's in the hallways in the morning. He actually greets the kids outside as they're coming in off the buses and then goes in, in the hallways to, to kind of chat with the teachers. And he's always, he's always around. He's always amiable and, and very, very friendly with everybody that I'm around.
Have you ever heard someone address him like, "Good morning, Mr. Caraffa. How was your weekend, Mr. Caraffa?" And him refuse to answer to that person?
I've never heard, never, ever.
Have you, and you've been a teacher for how long at Memphis?
Twenty-six years. Twenty-six years.
Twenty-six years?
Three years, three years subbing after that for twenty-nine years.
You know many people in the school, in the community, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And you would have a good sense of the feeling for Matthew Caraffa for the junior and senior high staff? Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And what is your feeling that, what would, what do you think this, generally, the, the overwhelming majority of the staff would feel, uh, regarding Mr. Caraffa's performance as, as a principal?
Um, he's involved. Um, he's got a good reputation in the district, in the community. Um, he's been, um, available. Um, he's approachable. If you have a problem, um, you can go and discuss things with him. I, I don't see any with between kids and parents. I've seen him deal with different, all different, uh, individuals. Um, he, with the professional development staff meetings, he always starts the staff meetings with circles to build teams. His efforts when, as he come in, the big, the big, uh, push as he came in with team building. And, um, I think he's firm but fair. Uh, he does hold high standards and holds us accountable, holds teachers accountable and other people accountable. He's, uh, very passionate about what he does. And, um, like I said, he, he just puts a positive image for Memphis. I'm floored at the, the words that have been thrown around regarding him. It sounds like their board hired a toe of the hun by the words. I mean, terrified dictatorship, retaliation, intimidation. I'm like, really? Um, I'm floored by that. And, um, he's done more for our image than, um, and, and, and for the district generally, holding us up. And, and, um, I, I would say the general, general, um, feeling in the community and the district is very positive.
And so you've never seen any actions, uh, that would constitute retaliation or intimidation, uh, or treating staff members unprofessionally by Mr. Caraffa?
Not at all. If anything, he goes the extra mile to make people feel comfortable.
And, um, have you noticed that he, that there's an in-group with him and an out-group with him? Have you ever noticed anything like that?
Um, you know, he talks, he actually, sometimes he stands down by the high school office and chats with the guys and the gals down that way. And then sometimes he comes to the junior high side and sometimes he's in the, I mean, he's all over. So he, he establishes relationships. And I've never seen like a, an fusionary group or, um, this is my, I, I'm going to say good morning to you and not to you. I've never witnessed that.
Um, do you believe that Mr. Caraffa is helping to make Memphis a better school than, than what it was when he arrived?
Yeah.
And, um, one of the allegations also appears to be that he has been treating women differently, And, um, one of the allegations also appears to be that he has been treating women differently, um, harsher than he has the, their male counterparts. Have you seen any evidence of that?
No, absolutely not.
Have you ever seen any evidence, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I, I've seen him deal with men and women, and I've never seen any hint of anything that, that favors one gender or the other, I mean, he talks with everybody, he's very friendly that way.
Okay, and, um, have you had an opportunity to witness him in staff meetings?
Yes.
And when, um, there is a problem with the school or something that needs to be solved, is he willing to work with teachers, listen to what they have to say before he makes his decisions?
Yes, he actually, again, with the team building, he actually asked for input, and then he gives his view, and then he asks again for more input, and then, um, he uses, it's a team concept, it's the whole PBIS, everything's team concept, team building. And so he doesn't make a dictatorship, uh, decision, and then say, "This is my way or the highway." Usually, he would ask, and then he put us in groups or whatever, and we work on something, and then he goes around and, and, um, and gets the consensus, and then he usually sends out, like, an email or a, a questionnaire or something about the view, and he goes with, you know, whatever the majority of the people want, or, or what they all, you know, what we agree on. Very.
Um, Lori, I was a teacher for almost twenty years before I became an attorney at a small school like Memphis in, uh, St. Clair County, and, um, when you're at a school for a long time like that, I've, I've found that you, I, I can get a good sense of where, um, the, maybe not everyone, but a really good majority, uh, maybe even most of where the teachers came down when it came to a principal, and we had three different principals at my school, uh, when I was there, um, and how they felt about that principal. Do you believe the accusations and allegations that you've heard against Mr. Carafa, do you believe that that accurately represents the feeling by the staff at the Memphis Junior slash Senior High School?
No, no, eh, no. I believe that the allegations, um, are, um, maybe a very small percentage, um, what, whatever, every, nobody's gonna please everybody all the time, and I, I believe that, um, his communication skills, his interpersonal interactions are very, very good, and he's very, very clear, and, um, and I, I don't believe the allegations for a minute.
Um, okay, Lori, uh, I think I don't have any further questions unless there's something else you'd like to state that hasn't been, that they would have asked.
Um, just that, um, like I said earlier, he does hold everybody, he holds high standards, he's very proud of the school, he's very proud, um, of, of progress, he, he engages everybody, he's, um, and he is a good, is a very good fit for Memphis, because we're a small district, and we, it was a period of time where we were kind of, you know, what, what is our mission, what are, and so he came in and said, "Hey, you guys, let's update the mission, you guys work on it, let's figure out what we need to do", and so he's a great problem solver, and he's, um, and he only thinks the best for Memphis. He, he gives him the passion, I kid you not, he's there probably, I mean, with my cross-country and track team, he comes to my, you know, the fun, the fun run that I put, put on, he was the only administrator that showed up and was there, um, and, uh, he supports our, our programs, and, and I see him there, like, all the time, working with kids, all the time, the kids are very, very receptive to him, um, and when he has to discipline a kid, he's very firm and fair, and moves right along, and involves the parents, and then even before the kids go back into the room, um, back into the scenario, he talks to the teacher, they have a plan to get the kid acclimated, the student acclimated back into the classroom, um, he's big on restorative circles, on getting, um, everybody, you know, really getting to the base of what people feel, and I, I just, I, this whole thing has just been surprising to me, very, very surprising.
Thank you, Lori.
Mm-hmm.
I have no further questions for you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Ms. Sandborn, Roy Hanley, I've got a couple of questions for you as well.
Sure, sure.
Okay, um, now, again, you're a full-time teacher, teaching five hours per day?
Yes.
And you don't have any administrative responsibilities, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and obviously, you've had a good personal relation, relationship with Mr. Carafa, right?
Well, I've had a good personal relationship with most of the teachers, most of the staff, most, and most everybody. I, 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 I get along, I try to make it, you know, where, you know, I, we, if we disagree about something, let's work it out, it's not a big problem.
Okay, so you're an easy person to get along with, right?
I like to be so.
Okay, and you've been able to get along with Mr. Carafa, obviously, right?
Yes.
And, uh, you've, you've been able to observe Mr. Carafa in a, in a group setting where there's other teachers and perhaps students present, correct?
Yes, correct.
And, uh, you, you haven't seen anything that's disturbed you when you've observed that, correct?
I have not seen anything that would even get close to being.
Okay, but would it also be fair to say that you can't testify about everyone else's experiences one-on-one with Mr. Carafa?
And I would, I, as Beth said, I can't speak for anybody else but myself.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Um, I would like to, uh, ask Josh Ash, if he's available, I'd like to ask you a few questions.
Can you hear me this time?
I can hear you.
All right, good.
Good, um, why don't you tell the, the board a little bit about your role as a teacher at Memphis Community Schools?
Yep, I'm the band and choir director for Memphis Community Schools, this is, I'm in my fifteenth year. Uh, I teach at, at all the building levels, the elementary, junior high, high school, um, and, um, you know, do the marching band and, uh, all the performances in and out.
Okay, and, um, have you, in, in your role as a teacher and advisor and, and band teacher and, uh, club sponsor, I guess, marching club, uh, have you had an opportunity to work with Mr. Carafa?
Yes, I have, a lot, I mean, the thing about, you know, the whole band and choir gig is that you're not just, uh, similar to what Beth Phillips was sharing, you're not just doing the, the regular, you know, day-to-day classroom duties, you're also having to deal with a lot of, uh, a lot of different scenarios, um, outside of, of just the school building.
So then it would be fair to say like that, uh, and even Lori to a certain extent, and they, and they testified, that you would be in a position to have seen Mr. Carafa more than the typical teacher?
Yes.
And you would have, would have had an opportunity to have worked with him and witnessed his behaviors, his personality, um, more than what a typical teacher would, because you have all these education responsibilities, but also all these after-school, uh, outside of school activities as well?
Yes, yep.
And why don't you tell me about what you've witnessed with Mr. Carafa as a principal of Memphis Community Schools?
Um, I've enjoyed having Matt Carafa as our principal. He, uh, I feel like when he came in, he brought in, um, just a clear vision, um, but he, the thing that impressed me the most about, uh, Matt is that not only, uh, does he have a clear vision, but he does not, uh, I've never seen him, uh, like, put his foot down and say, "It's gotta go this way." Typically, he says, "Hey, here's my vision, what do you guys think?", and, uh, really pushes the, um, the teacher input, the teacher as the professional, um, uh, but, but I think is a really good way at the same time as maintaining, uh, the ability to say, "Hey, I'm, I'm treating you like the one that knows your classroom, I'm treating you like the professional", but at the same time as saying, you know, "I'm, I am your boss, this is my vision as well", and, um, the, the balance, uh, is, I, I've appreciated that. And it's not always easy to work with a band and choir director. We are not the easiest people to work with, and, uh, uh, because we're pretty passionate, and, uh, uh, he is extremely flexible, and, um, and has worked really well.
Does he go the extra mile by actually attending, I mean, uh, Ms. Sandborn, uh, and Ms. Phillips seem to kinda say that he actually goes to events outside of school, that he comes to these events, that he's there to support the, the teachers who run them, he's there to support the students that participate them, and to connect with the parents and community members who attend them. Uh, do you see him at a, with, is that a true statement, or how do you feel about that?
Yep, yeah, Matt, uh, Matt has attended, uh, he attends my concerts, he, um, uh, he will come down and make it a point to, to say, "Hey, you know, I know this is coming up, is there anything I can do to, uh, you know, make sure it goes, goes smoother for you", or, or if he notices an area where I missed a communication, um, you know, he's not afraid to say, "Hey, you know, can we make sure we fix this?", um, but, uh, but yeah, he, he does go out of his way to make sure that he, uh, supports the, the music program.
Okay, and have you ever witnessed, and so, maybe you don't have to attend every single staff meeting for both the, the high school and the elementary, because you're in two different schools, but would it be fair to say that you've attended many staff meetings with Mr. Carafa?
Yeah, yep, I attend, those are, uh, those are the, the staff meetings that I do attend are with him.
Oh, okay, so you don't go to, all right, so then, um, so again, you've had somewhere around a hundred staff meetings with him, have you ever seen any evidence of him pounding on the, uh, raising his voice, using his physical stature to intimidate or, uh, or shutting student, uh, teachers down and treating them unprofessionally? Have you seen, seen or witnessed any type of, of evidence that would support that, that conclusion?
No, no, like, uh, I think that's what shocked me the most, is that, uh, sometimes when, when I'm thinking, "All right, I bet he's gonna put his foot down", he doesn't, and he continues to make sure that he stays open with the staff and try to make sure that the staff feels taken care of, and, uh, I know that's a high, uh, for educators, I know that is very high, uh, on their list, is wanting to feel like the administrator supports them, and, uh, and I, I feel like he goes way out of his way to try to make sure that we feel like that.
So you've been at, you've been at Memphis for fifteen years, is that correct?
Yes, yep.
And so you've had an opportunity to develop a lot of relationships, uh, among the staff, is that correct?
Yes.
And do you believe, and I'm assuming you've been listening to the majority, if not all, of the, the, some of the allegations and accusations, uh, leveled against Mr. Carafa today?
Yes, yep, well, I've been on the whole time.
Do you believe that those allegations, uh, accurately represent the, uh, feeling of the staff members or the, or most staff members at Memphis High School?
No, I would not say most staff members, I would, may, if there's a small amount, um, maybe, but, but not that I would, no.
Have you ever, uh, you know, um, come across situations where he has, uh, retaliated in any way or, or intimidated any teacher or student at all?
No, I have never seen that.
Okay, and do you have anything else you'd like to say, uh, about this at all that I have not asked about that you would like to, to mention?
You know, I, uh, I too, um, live in the community, um, I have, uh, four kids over in the elementary school and one, uh, sixth grader in the junior high. Um, I am highly invested in our, in our school system, uh, I wanna see Memphis be, uh, successful, and, um, and I wanna see the kids in Memphis be successful, um, so I'm highly invested in, uh, not only in my, uh, occupation, but in our community, and, um, and I think that Matt Carafa is a, is and has been, uh, a great administrator to work under, uh, and someone that I would want my kids to be able to work with as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ash.
You're welcome.
Hi, Mr. Ash, it's Roy Hanley, I imagine you're gonna be able to guess most of what I'm gonna ask you at this point, but let me, let me just start out a little bit. Uh, you mentioned that you're the only band and choir teacher for Memphis Schools?
Yes, yep.
And how much time per week roughly, as a percentage, do you spend at the elementary school?
Um, I only spend about, that's about fifty minutes there a day, um, it ends up coming to, I don't go over there on Wednesdays, so four days, so fifty minutes.
So roughly one hour of your, your teaching load per day, is that the elementary?
Per day, yeah, yeah, yep.
And the rest is at the junior and senior high school?
Yep.
Okay, and, uh, does Mr. Carafa evaluate you completely, or does the elementary principal also have some input?
Uh, no, he is, he evaluates me.
Okay, and, uh, once again, you, you've testified as to your observations regarding Mr. Carafa, correct?
Yep.
And I suppose it would be fair to say that you're experi, you can't testify as to everyone else's experiences with Mr. Carafa, would that be correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir, that's, that's all I've got.
You're welcome.
Mr. Carafa, can I ask you, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ash, can I ask you one more question?
Yes.
Um, so is there, uh, what would you, how would you describe the feeling of the environment at Memphis High School, junior slash senior high school?
Um, well, the, I, I think that, uh, the, the environment has been, uh, more, more focused on trying to, like, the implementation, like I said, of PBIS, or, like, like the other teachers' PBIS, and, um, the, that whole trying to be more positive, trying to make sure that you're listening to students, and, and, uh, um, I mean, that is the whole notion, is to, to try to look at things from another person's perspective, whether it's a student or a colleague, um, and I think that, uh, I think that that is what we have been striving for, and that that has been increasing.
Do you believe that, uh, Memphis High School has improved and has become a better place to be since Mr. Carafa has arrived?
Yes, I do.
No further questions?
Nothing further for me.
Okay, um, I would like to, uh, call Lisa Drulick.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. My name is Bill Langman, how are you doing this, this evening?
Uh, good, how are you?
Good, now, it's my understanding that you are not a teacher at, um, Memphis Community Schools?
No, I'm not.
But you are, you have a child, uh, and you are a community member, um, and your child attends Memphis Community, uh, Schools, and in particular, the junior slash senior high school, is that correct?
That's correct.
And have you had an, uh, opportunity to see Mr. Carafa as an administrator, um, in his role as a principal of the school?
Uh, yes, I have.
And, um, can you tell the board members a little bit about what you've witnessed with Ms., as a parent and community member, and maybe, you know, a person who has the most interest in the Memphis Community Schools, because your child attends there? Uh, can you tell the board member what you have witnessed with Mr. Carafa?
Uh, most certainly, um, well, first of all, my, I have a daughter that's a sophomore that attends the high school, um, I believe it was her eighth grade year, there were some, um, issues she was having within amongst her peers, um, and my daughter, who always enjoyed going to school, no longer wanted to go to school, um, so one morning when I went in to, uh, pick up my daughter, um, Mr. Carafa approached me, 'cause he knew I was visi, visibly upset, um, I went to him with the concern about the bullying situation, um, he was very professional, we talked behind closed doors. Um, he was very professional, we talked behind closed doors. Uh, the discussion was not, um, discussed in front of anybody else in the, um, school, you know, our staff or students. Um, he got my daughter's story, he received my side of the story. And promptly he took care of the situation in a matter of a few days, I would say probably about three days if I had to.
To Google Meet, enter the meeting pin followed by the pound key. Your call will be connected when you enter the pin followed by the pound key. Thank you, you are muted because a lot of people are on this call, press star six to unmute.
Yes, I, um, I'm also the class of twenty twenty-two's, uh, sponsor. Um, so I sponsor that class, like for homecoming, um, boat building parties. Um, so I'm actively involved, you know, doing projects in the school. Um, during homecoming, we do also hallway decorating. Um, Mr. Carafa is always present when I've been in the school for those type of events. I see him active at volleyball games, which my daughter is a volleyball player. Um, I do attend football games as well, I've seen his presence, um, at football games as well. Um, I've really, I have seen him at almost all the events that I've attended.
So, um, according to your understanding and perception of the community, um, what do you think the overall interpretation of, uh, Mr. Carafa is? And how do they view him, uh, in the community and, uh, at these events and so on?
Um, as, as far as I know, um, he's got a great reputation. Um, my daughter and I have a very open, um, door policy as far as communication. And she has expressed to me, um, how much she respects Mr. Carafa, um, along with her peers. Uh, my daughter and another student were, um, in a class this year called Genius Hour. And they came up with the idea to start the Memphis, uh, store. And from my understanding, Memphis has never had a store and if they did a school store, it was years and years ago. Um, along with Mr. Carafa's support, Beth Phillips, um, one of the teachers that we spoke to earlier was involved. Um, Mr. Carafa was very professional, he had open communication with myself and my daughter on his thoughts of the school store. He supported it a hundred percent. Um, and I'm proud to say too, that in eighteen days of being open and only open for thirty minutes a day, uh, we managed to raise eleven hundred dollars. Um, and Mr. Carafa was very proud of that and, and, um, like I said, he supported the store and continues to. Um, without him, I don't believe, without him and Beth Phillips, this would have been impossible.
And, um, so your child was attending Memphis, uh, junior high, senior high before Mr. Carafa? Or did she go into that school when he first arrived there?
Um, she, I believe was in eighth, I'm trying to think, if he's been there, what, three years? She was in an eighth grade, for the first year she was there was the year that she had the bullying issue. Um, and that was taken care promptly, so, um...
So do you believe that Mr. Carafa is making Memphis Community Schools a better place for the students? And for the staff and for the parents and for the community members?
Absolutely.
Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Um, the only thing I also would like to add is that, you know, during this last semester prior to, um, you know, school, uh, being, you know, home school, I should say, um, the, the students could switch over to, um, a different class. And my daughter was concerned because the store was not open Monday through Friday like it originally was. Um, my daughter was able to approach Mr. Carafa without parental involvement. And they discussed, um, the concerns of the store, when it was gonna be open, how often it was gonna be open. Um, and they came to a resolution, again, without my or my husband's involvement. Um, he treated her with respect, um, and I was just very pleased with the fact that, you know, he treated her with such respect and I didn't have to get involved.
Thank you, thank you, Ms., uh, Drulick, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, hello ma'am, this is Roy Henley, uh, just a couple of very quick questions. Uh, would it be fair to say that your interaction with Mr. Carafa was based, uh, upon your status as a parent of some students in the school?
Can you repeat that question?
Sure, that was a bad question, um...
It's getting late, I know.
Really, um, would it be fair to say that, um, you know, when you dealt with Mr. Carafa was as a parent of students?
I'm sorry, you're, you cut out, I cannot hear you.
Sure, sure, um, so you're, you're a parent of a couple of kids at the junior, senior high school, correct?
I have, I have one in, in the high school and one is still in elementary.
Okay, so one in the high school, and when you deal with Mr. Carafa, you deal with him as a parent of a student in the high school, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and, uh, based on that, you really don't have any knowledge on how Mr. Carafa handles internal personnel issues, right?
Uh, no, I don't, but, um, as far as being a class sponsor and so forth, I'm technically, uh, on the payroll. Um, and any questions I've had, you know, for him regarding how I sponsor the class and so forth, he's been extremely professional, um, and I've had no issues, you know, with him regarding that. Um, you know, we're, we're very strict with following the school guidelines as far as the school building parties and so forth. And, um, I've communicated with him, you know, on the, the school rules and policies and procedures. And I ensure that those policies and procedures are followed even at float meetings, even though it's maybe on a Saturday or Sunday.
Okay, well, thank you ma'am, appreciate your time.
Alright, thank you.
So very quickly, uh, Lisa, in your role as an advisor and, um, you, you, uh, you have had an opportunity to work with him, um, and this is a paid position, uh, in school-related matters, is that correct?
Uh, that is correct, yes.
And you've had an opportunity to see him as a principal in his role as overseeing school-related matters, is that correct?
Yep, yep.
Alright, no further questions?
Thank you.
Nothing to be either. Okay, I'd like to call, um, Dawn Urban. Dawn Urban, are you there?
Hey Dave, I think we, I think we need to take a, a time, time check because we're either gonna have to extend the meeting or bring it to another night.
Chris, one of that policy that, uh, limits us to eleven o'clock, because I believe that may have been an old policy.
I'll bring it up. I'd be oka, I'd be okay to make the motion to extend it, but I'll sign the policy.
Just for your own knowledge, it's my understanding that the last board meeting went to eleven thirty. Um, I think I can be done by then, I don't know what Mr. Henley has, just for, just for your own knowledge. I don't have another thirty witnesses meeting with that.
That's, that's good to understand. Yeah, we had, we actually had a motion to extend it for the last meeting, thank you.
Chris, I did find the policy that stated two thousand twelve, I don't, don't know if we replaced that.
Knowing that he called you thirty minutes plus approximately, I, I just say we make a motion to extend it to no later than twelve o'clock and then keep moving. I'd rather not come back another night.
I support that one, Chris, Audrey.
Who is that that had support?
Audrey.
Okay, thank you. I am motioned by Mr. Parry, supported by Mrs. O'Connor, to continue the meeting to twelve o'clock. I'll take a roll call vote.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Parry?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh? Yes. Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Dirt?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a unanimous vote, all yes to continue, uh, or to extend the meeting to twelve o'clock. So, we can continue on, Mr. Langeman, thank you.
Okay, so, um, I would like to call Dawn Urban, if she's available? Dawn Urban? Alright, I'm gonna call, uh, at this time, Adam Ricker, if he's available, and I'll come back to Dawn very quickly.
Hi, I'm here, this is Adam Ricker.
Hi, Adam, this is Bill Langeman, um, thank you. Um, can you tell the board members, uh, and general public a little bit about your role in the Memphis Community Schools?
Yes, I am a high school English special education teacher. This is my first year at Memphis, uh, that's my first full-time teaching job. Um, I started the year teaching gym and computers as a part-time position and, uh, special education position was opened up. I expressed some interest in it, taking college courses, uh, to be, I'm, I've been emergency certified as a special education teacher. I am the public address announcer for the basketball games, I coach mock trials. I author the monthly newsletter and I am a junior varsity baseball coach.
And how long have you lived in the community again?
I don't live in the community, I've, I've been teaching here for this school year though.
Okay, alright, so, um, have you had an opportunity to witness in the past year Mr., uh, Carafa's interactions with teachers, students and staff?
Yes, every day, every day to this school.
And would you, uh, have you ever witnessed any retaliatory conduct on his behalf?
None at all, uh, I've never witnessed anything like that. I, you know, the thing is, I, I saw one time, there was a, there was a disagreement at a staff meeting about an issue and he did not get heated at all, he kept his composure, he was very professional about it and we were able to, everybody was able to figure out a solution. Um, one thing I have to say about Matt with his relationships with, with other staff members. I'm young, this is my first full-time teaching job, I just turned twenty-six. Um, and so obviously that could be used against me, I haven't been in the building all three years that Matt has. However, in the past five years, I've been taking all sorts of education classes. I've had field placements and student teaching experiences and part-time jobs in, I believe, six different buildings. And Matt is by far, he creates the most comfortable environment for his teachers of, of all the districts that I have worked in. Um, I have to say that, you know, I, I've seen zero intimidation, uh, these, the accusations of intimidation, uh, I think are, are being overblown. Um, I know that some people might be, they might feel intimidated by the informal walkthroughs, but I don't think it's because of Matt, I think just the fact that there's a walkthrough, you know. And my students will get intimidated if, if I'm walking around to make sure they're doing their work right. So, it's just a matter of that, it's not that, that a person who forces intimidation upon other people. Um, one thing that I have prided myself on is trying to form positive relationships with everybody and, and I can confidently say that I believe I have a positive relationship with every staff member in the school. Only being there a year, we have two different lunch periods and I've made an effort to switch every other day which lunch period I eat lunch in so that I can connect with every teacher in that school. And I'm not, everything, everything that goes on conversation-wise in those lunch periods is, you know, it's private conversation. I'm not here to rat on anybody, tell any, you know, say, oh, this person said this, this person said that. But I can say without, without any shadow of a doubt, I have not heard one person, either of those lunches, say anything about Matt being intimidated. There's always gossip that goes around and, and it's been like this in every school building that I've worked in or I've learned in as a student teacher. Um, and, and people will complain about things, it happens everywhere, but honestly, the, the only things I have really heard in terms of that are some people are not huge fans of the, the Kagan system, the, um, and, and, and the restorative circle, because it's different. But as somebody who has seen how education goes recently, how it is in these different districts, these are all things that I've seen in all of these other schools. I, I see, and it, it's all part of progressing education. And I think that's what Matt's doing here in Memphis, is he's trying to move things forward, uh, and progress kind of with the times. And I think he's doing a very good job with it. Um, I've seen, you know, and when I was being interviewed over the summer, I had an opportunity to take full-time jobs in other districts. And I took this one because it, first of all, it's a small community and I grew up very near here. Um, I'm very invested in the students, in the community. Um, and honestly, one of the huge, one of the biggest deciding factors for me was, was Matt and how welcoming he was and how friendly he was. And he still continues that to this day with not only me but other staff members and with students in the hallway too. I see all the time, he's always interacting with staff members and students and he's always, uh, coming up with ways to involve their personal interests, make connections with people's personal interests so that he can keep a conversation going that isn't just about school. I've even had some kids, you know, every school's got the kids that, oh, they, they, I hate every teacher here. And, and I've had some of those kids even complain about teachers and then they will bring up. I've had this happen multiple times, but you know what, Mr. Carafa, he's alright, he's pretty cool. He makes me feel welcome here. And I think that speaks volumes to what Mr. Carafa means to this school. You know, there's, there's no, I guarantee you, if, if Mr. Carafa's contract, uh, is not renewed for next year, if he doesn't come back, there won't be any winners in this situation, but, uh, there, there will be losers in this situation unfortunately. The people who will be the losers in that situation will be our students and our teachers and the people in our community.
Thank you, Adam, I appreciate your comments, I have no further questions.
I have no questions, thank you. Thank you.
Dawn Urban, are you available?
Can you hear me?
I can now.
Okay, have trouble with the mute there.
Okay, my name is Bill Langeman, I'm the attorney representing Matthew Carafa. I'd like to ask you a few questions, um, regarding your time there at Memphis.
Sure.
Um, so first of all, why don't you tell us a little bit about what, uh, your background at Memphis and where you are now and so on?
Um, I was a special education teacher in Memphis from two thousand fifteen until October of two thousand nineteen. I started out over at the elementary school my first year. I started out over at the elementary school my first year and transferred over to the junior senior high school the following year, uh, and that's where I remained until I left the end of October two thousand nineteen. I took a position as a special education teacher in a middle school within the Lance Cruz School District. Um, I left Memphis, um, for career advancement. Um, it had nothing to do with, um, Matt Carafa. Um, as a matter of fact, I would have rather have stayed in Memphis, um, if I could have, um, expanded, I don't want to say expanded, um, enhanced my teaching capabilities within the district, um, but at the time, I needed to move on, uh, to a larger district.
And, um, were you a, uh, were, did you ever participate as a co-teacher at all in, um, while you were at Memphis?
Yes, most of my teaching was co-teaching at the junior high as well as the high school end.
And are you aware that there was a complaint filed against Mr. Carafa? By a teacher at Memphis?
Um, I did hear of that after I had left, yes.
And is, uh, were you ever a co-teacher in that classroom?
Briefly. Uh, the beginning of this school year, September two thousand nineteen through October twenty-fifth of two thousand nineteen.
Did you ever have any concerns about what was happening in that classroom?
Um, I can't say I have any concerns. I was, um, trying to get acclimated. It had, it was a classroom with a teacher I had never previously co-taught with. Um, you know, I guess kind of like in a new relationship, we were still trying to figure things out. Um, it was a language arts class, and the, I would say, I don't recall the numbers exactly off the top of my head, but, uh, I would say more than half the class was special education students, and that's why I was in there.
Okay. And did you have an opportunity during your time at Memphis to, uh, work with, uh, Matt and to see Matt, witness Matt, uh, interacting with other teachers as well in a professional, uh, manner?
Yes.
And how did he treat professional teachers, including yourself?
Um, personally, he treated me very well. Um, being a special education teacher, there's a lot of, um, behind the scenes issues that go on concerning that. Um, he always asked for my input. I do recall a specific incident where he came to a classroom that I was co-teaching and called me out in the hall and said he had a concern with a special education student that had never, um, he had never dealt with before, and asked me my opinion on how to handle that particular student, uh, before he, you know, tried to take care of the matter that was going on up in the high school. I appreciated that.
So, he was open. He was open to signature pictures?
Yes, he was very open, and he treated everyone, I mean, openly and fairly from what I observed.
And you observed him in staff meetings, is that correct?
Yes.
And you observed him talking and discussing and interacting with other, uh, teachers in the building as well, didn't you?
Yes.
And you witnessed him interacting with students, didn't you?
Yes.
Did you ever see any evidence of him treating anybody inappropriately, intimidating anyone, or acting unprofessionally in any way, shape, or form?
No, I never witnessed that.
Did you ever see him pound on his desk?
No.
Did you ever see him pound on a table at a staff meeting?
No.
Did you ever see him become emotionally agitated because, uh, because teachers disagreed with him?
No, not at all.
Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Um, I just want to say I really miss everybody in Memphis. Go Jackets, if the opportunity ever presents itself, I would love to come back and teach in Memphis again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ms. Urban Roy Henley. Uh, real quick question. So, you mentioned that you left Memphis Schools in October of two thousand nineteen, correct?
Yes.
And would it be fair to say that you can testify about other teachers' experiences with Mr. Carafa since that time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. That's all I have.
Sure.
I'm gonna recall Matthew Carafa.
Hi.
Mr. Henley, can you hear Mr. Carafa?
Can you hear me, Mr. Henley?
I can, yes, thanks.
Um, Mr. Carafa, um, when were you hired at Memphis Community Schools? Um, I was hired in August of two thousand seventeen. Um, when you were hired, um, did you execute a term of employment with Memphis Community Schools? Yes, sir, I did.
Uh, to the board, I have, um, emailed each of you a copy of Mr. Carafa's signed employment contract with Memphis Community Schools. In the email, it is under exhibit number six. Would you like to follow along? I'm gonna go through a couple of the key provisions in this contract. So, on, the contract that I have is not numbered in the pages, but the paragraphs are numbered, so I'm gonna refer to it under paragraph numbers. Right now, I'd like to direct you to paragraph number sixteen, if some of the board members would like to take a look at that. Um, may I ask Mr. Carafa to read, uh, paragraph number sixteen? And that deals with specifically in bold print, the non-renewal of contract. Go ahead, Mr. Carafa.
Uh, paragraph sixteen states the non-renewal of contract. The Board of Education, they elect to adopt the end of this contract based on a minimally or ineffective performance evaluation at the end of each contract year.
Okay. So, that's essentially the first, uh, section of that, uh, that paragraph, and, um, according to paragraph number nineteen, so just a couple paragraphs down, it deals with the evaluation. I'm gonna ask Mr. Carafa to read that.
Uh, the evaluation, uh, procedure used by the board, we mutually agreed upon between the board supervisor and the principal, high school curriculum coordinator, including appropriate forms. Written evaluation should be provided to the principal, per the curriculum coordinator before March thirtieth annually.
Now, do you understand, Mr. Carafa, that in order for the Board of Education to elect, to ban renew your contract, you must have been assigned or evaluated either minimally or ineffective on your last performance evaluation? Is that your understanding?
That's what I understand.
Now, referring to, uh, exhibit seven, so, uh, to the board members, I have also included exhibit seven in an email to you. Um, this is, we've talked about this before, this is Mr. Carafa's, uh, final evaluation for two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. It was signed on February sixth by both Mr. Superintendent Brad Goodme and Matthew Carafa. Um, were you, how were you rated for the two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty school year for this performance evaluation?
Uh, I think, I believe, it was ineffective, in my understanding.
And there is a box on the performance evaluation that lists two point five to three point four as effective. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you received an overall score of two point five eight. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, you had, you have an effective, uh, evaluation for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And even if that is not the last performance evaluation, even if they consider that to be a mid-year, which we don't believe that did, uh, then your two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen evaluation, what was that rated?
Uh, two thousand eighteen was rated overall effective.
And that was executed by Mr. Goodme as well?
Yes.
And that's in your, uh, that's in your personnel file?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, and you've not received any other evaluation since February sixth, two thousand twenty evaluation. Is that correct? Okay. Now, I would also like to, uh, return back to the contract under, again, paragraph number sixteen, if the board would like to follow. There's a second part, or a second prong to that paragraph. Um, so the first part deals with, uh, he must have received a minimum or ineffective performance evaluation to non-renew the contract, but there's another, there's some more language in there, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Carafa to read that. Go ahead, the board members.
The Board of Education, not less than ninety-seven days before the termination of the contract, the board actually provide written notice to the principal, junior senior high school curriculum coordinator.
Okay. And, um, and your understanding is that the twenty-third, two thousand twenty board meeting was only a, uh, a election to consider the non-renewal. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Goodme explained to me a couple of times that that was just an action to consider non-renewal of the contract.
And therefore, um, is your understanding that they have to have, as they say, elected to not renew the contract at least as a minimum ninety days before June thirtieth? Is that your understanding?
That's my understanding.
And currently, uh, today is April twenty-seventh, and that would be, uh, much less than the ninety days required, somewhere in the sixty-day mark. Is that correct? Now, um... I would also like to, uh, um, can we, I'll, uh, paragraph number seventeen in your employment contract called automatic extension of contract. I'd like you to read, uh, paragraph seventeen, please.
Uh, paragraph seventeen states automatic extension of contract. With effective, the highly effective performance evaluation from the transfer of this contract for a new three-year period will automatically extend at the end of the contract year. Uh, the contract year ends at midnight between June thirtieth and July first.
I'll stop right there for a second. So, is it your understanding that you have received in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, ineffective performance evaluation?
Yes, sir.
And therefore, automatically, uh, your contract has been extended for three years beyond this year. Is that your understanding?
That's what I understand.
However, the, the, the language also has an unless in there. You kind of read a part of that. I would like you to read the unless at this point.
The board, the top of the board, the top of the board, the top of the board, 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 the[1529.14]
Well, I guess I'd like to go to a closing statement, I don't know, Mr. Henley, you, you went first, so I guess you can make your closing statement, and if you choose not to do so, I'd like to make a short one.
Um, nope, I will, I will make a short closing statement. Um, the board has heard all the evidence at this point. What we have is an employee who, um, has shown that over the years, a problem with professional conduct, problem with behavior, problem that has consistently manifested itself, and, uh, been subject to correction as time goes by. We don't allege at all that he harassed everyone, or that he was inappropriate to everyone. People tend to be very well behaved in public, people tend to be very well behaved to their friends. However, um, Ms. Sturridge's investigation, which was independent, which was unbiased, showed a very severe problem with respect to workplace behavior, which tended to manifest itself privately, and when there was a, um, disagreement between the principal and certain teachers. That would be sufficient either to non-renew the contract, or simply to terminate the contract, uh, if the board found it to be the case. Uh, the question is, does the board believe the investigation? Does the board consider this to be a severe enough problem to end employment at this time? Uh, based upon that, and that's the board's decision, the board should vote and make what determination that it will. Uh, thank you for your time, thank you for your attention, and, um, I'll look forward to answering any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Again, my name is Bill Langeman for the board, I represent Matthew Carafa, and, um, I believe that we have presented actual documentary data, uh, witness statements with hard facts that stand in stark contrast to the allegations and conclusory statements made by Ms. Sturridge in the investigative, uh, summary. Um, I believe that the investigative sum, that she has, uh, been incomplete, the investigative summary said that no, all people claimed these facts about him being retaliatory, every, that every single employee she interviewed said that. Now she comes back and says, well, two happened, first she said one, then two. And so I, I think that, um, the fact that she waited until March second to even talk to Mr. Carafa, to actually address these situations with him, which is a full seven days after she had her conclusion already written, is very telling, and it should be a loud bell warning this board that there's something wrong there. And I know the golden rule is, you know, does that sound fair to have a conclusion? Even Mr. Goodme admitted that that is not what he would want for himself, that it does not appear fair, that he would not conduct an investigation in that manner, um, and didn't do that while, when he, when he conducted investigations. I believe the evidence that we have shown is that Mr. Carafa treats people professionally. These are teachers that came in and witnessed him, who've been a part of the community, or a teacher there for twenty-six to thirty years. They are interwoven into the fabric of Memphis Community Schools and Memphis Community, and they have an understanding of the feeling of the staff, the culture of the staff, they have seen different principals move through the school, and each one of them have said that Mr. Carafa has made Memphis High School better, and that the only losers here would be Memphis, okay? Because Mr. Carafa has done some wonderful things, he is bringing some new ideas. Two is not easy, all right? The, even these allegations stem from an incident that were, that allegedly took place seven months before the allegations came, the complaint was filed, and he has adamantly denied it over and over. And all of the evidence shows that he has been a positive role model to the teachers, he has created a positive environment, he treats people with professionalism. And finally, I don't believe, I, I, based on my interpretation of what, uh, I see, that Mr. Carafa attends all these extracurricular activities, he is helping out, he is the only administrator that showed up to some of these events, and he wants to be a part of it. And even now, after all this is going on, which I cannot imagine how difficult it is for him to continue to do his job right now, he is still doing everything that is asked of him, and then some. He's still supporting Memphis Community Schools, because I believe he cares about it, I believe the evidence shows that he cares about this school, that he cares about the teachers, that he cares about the students, he cares about making Memphis a better place to, to go to school and be. And finally, regarding the contract language, I think it's very clear, you know, you're lo, i- i- to non-renew his contract at this point in time opens up the board to a massive potential litigation, okay? Uh, at eighty thousand dollars a year and three years of salary, we're looking at well excess of two hundred and forty thousand dollars in damages. We don't have ninety day notice, and his last performance evaluation was effective. Every performance evaluation that he's got is effective. There is no cause to non-renew this contract, there is no cause to let Mr. Carafa go. You have a good principle, renew his contract, and that's what we would ask. Thank you.
Well, just on the, uh, the last statements made by Mr. Langeman, as he stated, he's, he's going by the contract, if I go to the contract, it's paragraph twenty, if there is a statement on there about moral, moral turpitude, and i- and if there is an actor behavior that greatly violates the sentiment or accepted standard, it would be, it would be cause. I'm not saying that's a red, but I don't take it that we can just say, he's got ninety days and here's where it is. There, there is a clause in there for early release. That's my interpretation. Roy, is that the same?
I believe that's correct, yeah. I would like to say that moral turpitude is typically, typically interpreted as a very, very high standard.
Mr. President, Morgan Cook, do I have the floor?
Yes, he do.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Goodme, Mr. Goodme, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. At this time, how many written complaints do you have signed by teachers or staff members against Mr. Carafa?
How many written complaints do I have? Uh, just the one formal.
You have one formal complaint signed by a teacher?
That's correct.
And were you asked by the board president to provide these names, dates, and times that Ms. Sturridge interviewed potential other complainants? Were you asked to provide those to the board by anyone on the board in the last thirty days?
Yes, I was.
And what was your response to that?
Uh, I reached out to Jean, and it was referred to that those would not be provided.
Okay, and, uh, again, I'll ask the question, uh, of you, Mr. Goodme.
Yep.
Who did, who does Jean represent?
The Memphis Schools.
Memphis Schools, and therefore go the Memphis School Board, correct?
Yep.
Okay. And what are her work product, the our work product that we paid her for?
Um, I don't believe that fits in the, the scope of it.
Okay. And so, and so the other complaints are then anonymous, right? Because we don't know who they are, don't know when they were taken, don't know if they were taken, frankly, because we have no notes, we have no names, we have no times. So would you say that those are, for lack of better terms, anonymous, Mr. Goodme?
The notes, the, I guess, the, um, the findings that Mrs. Sturridge presented to us, I, I don't find those anonymous, no.
No, that's not what I asked you, Mr. Goodme, I asked you, the statements made by someone, not sure who, not sure when, um, not sure what the content was, would you say that that would fit the definition of anonymous?
Uh, I think anonymous would mean nobody knows who they are, but Jean doesn't know who that, or Mrs. Sturridge knows who that's there from.
And do you know who they're from?
I do not.
And so you've made a decision based on what somebody else told you, somebody else said?
I made a decision to make the recommendation based on what I've seen, and based on the findings from Jean.
And what kind of corrective action have you provided to Mr. Carafa over the last twelve months?
Uh, just several meetings, we talked about setting different goals, and, um, so just constant communication.
Okay, that, there was a specific question, how many written corrective actions or action plans have you given Mr. Carafa in the last six months?
So the year or six months, because we sat down and talked.
There you go.
Okay, so on November seventh, we sat down, uh, and discussed different things going on. On this, December fifteenth, we came up with goals, written goals together that he was to institute. Um, on February sixth, we had a mid-year review, where we sat down to discuss the different happenings and, uh, everything going on, and then I think the last one, uh, that would have been the last one, was the actual, uh, February sixth, the, the review, his mid-year review.
Okay. So let me ask the question much more specifically. How many written documentations for performance did you give Mr. Carafa over the last six months?
Perfect.
You signed them and he signed them?
Mid-year review, one.
One, okay. All right. Uh, another question, Mr. Goodme, as I was reading the documentation of the, uh, IDP written for the teacher, during the, that IDP session, did the teacher and yourself get into a, a, for lack of a better term, an argument, and did the teacher get up and leave that session?
No, there was no arguments.
All right. Did you support that IDP?
I did.
And then did you subsequently say that the IDP would be taken away?
At the end of the investigation, yes.
And why did you do that?
Because based on the findings, the IDP was no longer, uh, gonna be put in place. Um, it was something that we used as a tool to help with growth, so we did not, uh, follow through with it.
So the IDP was for the teacher, not for Mr. Carafa, correct?
The IDP was for the teacher, that is correct.
So the teacher's performance improved based on the investigation, is what you're saying?
No, that is not what I'm saying.
Okay, well, then why would, why would the IDP be part and parcel to the investigation of Mr. Carafa?
The IDP was removed as a request from the teacher based on the investigation findings.
So the IDP was based on the teacher's, the investigation, uh, the, the, the investig, the finalization of the investigation made that performance better? I'm just trying to understand how the two are related. Okay. I'll just move on to one more question, uh, for you, Mr. Goodme. Were you sent a, well, actually, a foundational question first, and, uh, i- i- we have an agenda item, but I'd like to ask this question now, because it is, it does pertain to this, uh, decision. Mr. Goodme, who's the FOIA coordinator for Memphis Community Schools?
I am.
And were you sent a FOIA on four nine of two thousand and twenty?
I was.
And according to Memphis policy, number one-one-three-five has not been rescinded, um, because we don't have a, a Miola policy that supersedes it, we have, um, what's called the Freedom of Information Request Policy number one-one-three-five. And in that policy that you sent the board here a couple of months ago, the FOIA coordinator being yourself has four choices to respond to a FOIA. Are you aware of that document?
I am.
And did you respond as FOIA coordinator to that FOIA, um, with one of the four responses that are acceptable through our policy?
I'm just pulling it up to see what the exact wording is.
So I can read them to you?
Okay.
The first one is grant the request and either provide the requested documents and request payment in full or waive permit of the fee. Number two is issue a written notice to the requesting person denying the request. Number three, grant the request in part and issue a written notice to the requesting person denying the request in part. And number four, issue a notice extending for not more than ten business days, the period during which the FOIA coordinator shall respond to the request. So knowing those four choices, which one of those choices did you use to respond?
Um, none of them fully.
None of them?
That's correct.
And so why in a, in a situation so dire where, um, you have, well, we've taken a long time to complete this investigation, w- w- why would you fail to, um, why would you fail to use one of the four options you have for responding to FOIA documents as a FOIA coordinator?
Um, I passed the FOIA on the designated.
Okay, that, that actually wasn't my question, why did you choose not to respond one of the four acceptable methods, being the FOIA coordinator?
I do not have an answer for you.
So you don't know why you didn't, or you chose not to purposely?
I did not choose for purposely, no. The FOIA was, I was following up, and it was granted in part, but not within the five-day timeframe.
And has anyone made you aware of what, um, potentially could happen from not responding to a FOIA?
Yes.
And then, and, and who, and, and who lets you know what might happen?
Um, I reached out to Mr. Henley in regards to it.
And, and.
Go ahead.
And, and what might, what might happen from failing to respond properly to a Freedom of Information Act request?
There's a possibility of a lawsuit.
Okay. And is it your regular practice as FOIA coordinator to fail to respond to FOIA requests in the appropriate manner and the appropriate time?
No, it is not.
And so it's, is it, is it coincidence that it happened in this case, or, or, or it seems like, uh, it seems like in a case of this manner, you would have taken it seriously and made sure that it was done? Wouldn't, wouldn't you say that would be a reasonable expectation of a FOIA coordinator?
Yes.
Okay. So we have one written complaint, some unsubstantiated, unsigned, so you've refused to send response to a proper FOIA, you've refused to provide work that we paid for, and it has been said that we have all the information, and I'm sitting here, I don't have all the information. And that's all I've got for now, I reserve the right to speak again.
I'll go, uh, round the table here to see if there's any questions to make sure everyone's heard. Um, Mr. Parry, do you have anything further?
Hey, actually, I do have one for Matt. Matt, going back to the September ninth request from, uh, from, from the teacher, you had, you, you weren't, you weren't pleased at the material being shown on the TV in the discussion? Was this first asked for you? Is this okay material?
Uh, no, this was actually, I don't think it was September, I believe it was December, uh, when that occurred.
December when it occurred, but in September, did she not ask you for that material? Is this a, for the classroom?
She asked if the, if the book was acceptable, if she could read the book to the class.
I, I think she asked the book and the video, and, and asked for funding to make sure it's paid for.
Uh, no video that I'm aware of, but she asked for the book, I didn't say we could get the book for her. I don't recall a discussion about having a video for the mo, for any kind of a book or anything like that.
Okay. I, I don't have a whole, I don't have a whole lot more, I, I, I do have some, a lot of it was discussed by Jean, I do find, find credible. There is, I heard feedback during our, uh, parent workshop for two different parents that had the same scenario, that they just, they expressed, when they brought up ideas, they were shot down quickly. Um, similar statement, not, not, not in this school. Um, I do wish we had more representation on, uh, on today's call from people that had that issue versus just the report outs. I'm gonna do anything else right now.
Okay. Mrs. McHugh? Any discussion?
Um, yes, um, I also have, um, some problems with, um, the lack of people that we have that, that have, um, complaints, um, really the only complaint that I have in front of me is, um, and, um, and his response to it was actually very clear, and, and, and Matt's response to the generations and the teacher, um, and also there were four other people, four other staff members that had the same problems with that teacher and with the class and that, and so, you know, it, it seems to me kind of, it seems to me like the teacher was just on the, um, was being, uh, unstable, um, maybe there was, uh, just, I don't know, and it was the stable class, um, and for, um, all the assistants having issues, it seemed to me like, um, just something that, and then all of a sudden, we have all of these other people that have come forward, but we are hearing from any of them, we're just hearing from very credible teachers, there's a very credible staff that, um, have good things to say about Matt, and, um, and, you know, it's just, that's what I'm seeing and hearing myself. So, so I'm, I'm really not comfortable with anything, so, that's just me, so.
This is, this is Roy Hamley, I was wondering if I could interrupt for just a minute, um, you know, as we started this, what I said was that I was facilitating getting evidence in, and truly that's what I was doing, although I know I sounded like a trial lawyer at times, and, um, you know, and so did my counterpart, Mr. Langeman. Uh, Jean Sturridge and I have taken a, a close look at the contract and that evidence that's been submitted, and I think, uh, Jean and I at this point would agree, and we have to say this, to be fair to the board, um, not as advocates, but as attorneys who are trying to guide the board through this, that there is a strong argument to be made that this would be a just cause termination rather than a non-renewal based on some of the quirky contract language. Um, that needs to be thrown in, it would- Um, that needs to be thrown in. It would, and I think one of the board members picked up on this right away. It may be a paragraph twenty-one termination as opposed to hitting a non-renewal. Um, I don't think that Mr. Langman is going to strongly disagree with me on this, but if he does, certainly he should have an opportunity to make that statement. But, um, as the board is deliberating this, I think that's something that's important, um, important to raise here. I don't know if Jean wants to add anything, but, uh, certainly as you're considering this, do consider that as well.
I think you, this is Jean. I think you stated based on contract language, um, that issue. And, uh, the only thing I can indicate is that the, um, it's not, these were not anonymous sources, so I would just draw the distinction. I understand that the board would like to have heard from lots of people. But, um, I think the issue is really, uh, the contract language, and if you find just cause, you're going to, uh, release the principal. If you don't find just cause, he is going to remain.
Mr. President, can I remind you that we are in, we are in a board roundtable and we should not be being interrupted by these folks that already had their chance over the last four hours?
Yeah, I'll give Mr. Langman, um, a chance to respond and then we'll continue on with board discussion.
Um, obviously I would agree with both attorney's assessment. I think the non-renewal opens up the board to about two hundred and forty thousand dollars with the damages. Um, but at the same time, I would like to say that proving just cause, because if there's a just cause termination, this is probably going to litigation, is a very difficult hurdle to overcome. It's a pretty high hurdle. And I think both attorneys would agree with me in that regard. Um, and furthermore, in the contract itself, it cites, you know, crimes, actual criminal acts as examples of just cause, that we fraud and some other, you know, embezzlement and so on as, uh, examples. And typically moral turpitude is also interpreted as some type of crime, uh, or really heinous act. Um, I don't think any of the laying, any of the evidence in this case rises to that level, number one. Even if we take this, the investigative summary compiled by Ms. Sturridge at face value, I don't believe it rises to that level. Um, but having said that, I also noticed in your board policy that you cite in this, in, in making it to dismiss, uh, him in this regard, the preponderance of the evidence has to, you know, to even, or even non-renew his contract, the preponderance of the evidence has to be in favor of, you know, that's at least fifty-one percent of the evidence has to favor your side, that, that position. We have produced at least six witnesses today that have testified that they have been in this school for years and have witnessed none of these events. The one teacher that they did interview, a former teacher, couldn't have provided any specifics, no facts whatsoever, other than that he talked to her in the hallway and he sent some emails. If there was really threatening, intimidating emails out there, you would have seen them by now. And so I think the preponderance of the evidence actually clearly favors renewing his contract and giving Mr. Carafa another opportunity to prove how valuable he is to Memphis Community Schools.
Okay, we'll continue with the board discussion. Um, we've heard from Mr. Parry, Ms. McHugh, Mr. Cook. Um, Mrs. O'Connor, any discussion?
Uh, no, not without being repetitive to the other questions that have been asked and all that.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Bobstein, any discussion?
Uh, no, it, again, it's repetitive, but my concern, I guess, would be like this moral uh, turpitude when I'm looking at this. I mean, this is like aggravated assault, grand larceny, um, welfare, endangering welfare of children. I don't know if we qualify in any of those categories based on his contract, especially when he had his last evaluation, whether it's mid-year or final, his last evaluation has been effective just in February. So I'm not exactly sure how we would even go about this contract when it's very laid out specifically, and that's it.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mrs. Durst, any comment?
Yeah, I do, I do have a couple. Um, uh, let me start off by saying that, number one, my background is not in the education system per se, so some of these questions may be out of ignorance, but, um, I do want to start by saying I don't know the complainants, um, wouldn't know them if they were here. Um, I talked to Mr. Carafa once about the drainage we had, and that's it as far as, um, personal knowledge of them. But I did receive, and this probably goes to Brad. Um, I received my first email letter addressed to the board from the, the complainant on January sixth of two thousand twenty. I received nothing from the accused nor any other documentation uh, other than several emails from the complaint, uh, addressed to you, Brad, and then you forwarded them. Her, Mrs. uh, Sturridge's response, her, she stated the investigation was completed February twenty-fourth of twenty. On Thursday, April twenty-third, this is last Thursday, I received the contents of the folder, which you called the folder, which contained Mr. Carafa's response, his attorney's response, um, Mrs. Sturgis' response, and assorted other documents, um, which gave a different side to the complaint or an additional side to the complaint. Um, I need to ask why I would get this on Thursday for an, a meeting this important on the following Monday. In shape of the weekend, I got your informa- of Matt's information from you on the twenty-third of April, last Thursday.
A request was-
This was a meeting on Monday.
Yeah, a request was asked, um, by a board member to create a folder with that information, so that's why I made it. I, I think it was on Tuesday, I asked him, and it created on Thursday, Monday or Tuesday.
This is thirty days following the end of the investigation. So for me, trying to read through these documents, make notes, come up with questions, this became very difficult. It was not a good weekend for me, but four days, less than four days, I think is totally inappropriate for something this important. Next question, and again, this may be out of ignorance. If Mr. Carafa's behavior was so egregious that people felt threatened, feared retaliation, and your thought was to remove him from employment, why didn't you suspend him? Why did you allow him to return to the work environment or stay in the work environment if that was your belief?
Upon her findings, is that what you're asking?
Correct.
I, I do-
She states that people hear retaliation, they, they feel threatened. Why would you allow him to remain in that position if that's, that's your belief and you were looking at removing him?
I didn't think anybody was in immediate danger, um, from any of those issues.
But that was the report that we got. Am I, am I saying this incorrectly?
I guess maybe I'm, I'm confused by the question. Why didn't I remove him based on the finding?
As soon as you got the report back on the twenty-fourth of February, why didn't you remove him from this position, suspend him? Because in the report, people felt, according to the report, people felt threatened, feared retaliation, and your thought was to remove him.
Oh, I, I- I had conversations with Matt regarding it. I did not feel that there was any threat. It was a midterm word at that time, immediately, I guess.
So that part of the report you disagree with?
Then I don't think that immediate removal was enough.
And yet people felt threatened, feared retaliation. Um, and then my last comment is, uh, I do agree with, um, Karen in that we have, if this is correct, four different teachers and the assistant principal who have been approached by a student about issues going on in that particular teacher's class. And the issues were lack of control, no teaching plans, students using foul language in class, students on cell phones, laying on the floor, and being disrespectful. And that prompted him to do his walkarounds and what have you. Is that correct? And maybe you don't know the answer. Maybe that's better for Matt. Is that a yes? I should talk to Matt?
Uh, yes, uh, sorry, it's Mrs. Durst. Um, I can answer that up. It's, uh, yeah, that would be one of the reasons, I mean, that would be one of the reasons why, yes, that would probably to want to walk through during that time.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I do have one other one, I'm sorry. Um, in the, in the complainant's report, she states that, um, Mr. Carafa had offered her some teaching guides or had some pointers he wanted to share with her. And then additionally, and this question comes to, to, uh, Mr. Goodme, the very last part, she states that, uh, you, in your meeting with her, you had said that she could have a mentor if she wanted it? And you highly recommended it. My question is, did she, did she accept a mentor? Or he accept the mentor?
No, there is no mentor accepted.
Okay. Now, has Mr. Carafa ever been offered a leadership development class mentoring or conflict resolution class seminar?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. That's it, I'm sorry.
Okay, I've gone through everyone except myself. The one question I had, um, I don't recall if it was discussed, um, today or not, but the end of the eighteen, nineteen school year, I guess this is asking Matt, you had, um, given an effective rating, but you did mention, um, these areas that, is it true that these areas that you mentioned at the end of the eighteen, nineteen school year eventually became part of the IDP?
Uh, yes, for, 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 for the teacher, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, some of the areas we discussed, uh, at the end of the school year, um, I, I highlighted the, the actual, um, number of the, the domain in orange. And we discussed, uh, those are the areas I'd like to see some improvement in, and they did become part of those areas on the, they, they became part of the IDP as well in December.
Okay, thank you. I think, uh, all my other questions were covered by other board members. I'll circle back. Mr. Cook, you wanted to, um, have the floor again?
Um, I'm all set at this time. Are, uh, based on that, are you prepared for a motion?
Yeah, um, we are after our twelve o'clock extension, so, um, I guess, uh, I'll move to, uh, continue this meeting.
Second?
We'll do a roll call to continue the meeting. They have, uh, motion by Ryan, supported by Cook.
Okay, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Parry?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
Okay, we have a unanimous vote to continue the meeting, so the motion is carried. Um, at this point, is there any further discussion? I'll ask one more time from any board members. Okay, so that will complete, uh, item C.
Yes, um, I have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to agree, oh, yes, I also wanted to agree, um, with Mrs. Durst, how my weekend was not as enjoyable, partly because I had to go through all of this fan, because I didn't receive anything from Matt until this last Thursday. I never could see what his reply was to anything regarding this complaint and complaint and complaint and complaint, non-ending complaints from this teacher, and that's all that we had for the longest time. And so I didn't appreciate just getting it now and not seeing anything and any of his reply in that to it. So I just want to make that clear.
Thank you, Mrs. McHugh. Any other discussion from the board?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion if that's appropriate at this time.
Okay, we're, we'll move on to item D on our new business. This is the Administrator twenty-twenty dash one contract.
Uh, well, my motion will be, I make a motion that the Board of Education take no further action on Board Resolution twenty-twenty dash one, the resolution to consider the non-renewal of the contract of Matthew Carafa's administrator.
Support.
Please bear with me, I'm writing your motion down. So Mr. Cook, let me confirm I had the motion correct. Mr. Cook moves, um, to take no further action on Resolution twenty-twenty dash one, and that was supported by Mrs. Bobstein, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we have motion and support. Any further discussion on this topic before we take a roll call vote? Okay, Mrs. Heiling, will you conduct the roll call, please?
Okay, Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Parry? Mr. Parry?
Sorry, yes, I'm used to him.
Mrs. McHugh? Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor? Mrs. Bobstein?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, and Mrs. Durst?
Ms- Mr. Parry, can you repeat your vote? It was a bit distorted.
Yes.
Thank you. So that is a unanimous, um, vote of the board, yes, on the motion to take no further action on Resolution twenty-twenty dash one. Next, we'll move on to item E on our new business, the FOIA response.
I believe it's already been covered. I'm fine with moving on.
No further discussion on FOIA response. We'll move on to superintendent comments, item twelve.
Uh, just gonna reiterate what Matt and Susan said earlier. Our teachers are doing an outstanding job. We've received some emails from our community members, how great it's going. Um, Adam and I have been working very closely, getting state updates on budget. Uh, we will be organizing some information and calling a finance committee meeting. Um, there's some pretty harsh news, it looks like, coming our way with everything coming on. May fifteenth is a big day for, um, the state to figure out what our revenue is gonna look like and then- And then from there to kind of plan on what it may look like over the next 18 months. Um, so I will keep everybody updated on that. Um, Mr. Kujad had mentioned that, uh, we did bring custodians back today, uh, anyone that was willing to come in, um, to start cleaning out lockers, we'll move from the high school to the junior high, and then working on our plans in the elementary, which is a little more difficult because they share lockers. So identifying which materials go to what students. Um, the other thing with, uh, the governor's executive order on Friday, she allowed, uh, landscaping companies and such to start. So we did bring in our lawn cutting to start today. And, uh, they'll start maintaining the, the grounds for us on that. That's all I have at this time.
Anything for Mr. Goodney?
Hey Brad, this might have been better for Crut when he was on. Any, any word on when we're going to get the drainage completed for the field?
Uh, nothing that I've heard is, um, from, um, Mr. Christie as of yet. There is, uh, there's some lines, there's a one power line that runs from the concession stand to the, uh, girls softball scoreboard. And, um, until we can get Ms. Dig out here, um, to mark that line, we won't be able to put that in. Um, but Ms. Dig has not been contacted yet.
Okay. Anything further from the board from Mr. Goodney? Okay, we'll proceed to item 13, board roundtable. I'll start with, um, Mrs. McHugh. Anything for the roundtable?
I don't have, no, I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, Mr. Parry?
I'm going to say, the last, the last couple of months have been rough for all of us on many avenues. Um, Brad, we know we're going to have to find new ways of working with, with people at home and the strategy. Anything that you need from us? I'd rather you start discussing, uh, the student needs instead of the personnel. So i- if there's additional help we need for, for communications, for the laptops, uh, and strategy as far as how we're going to bring the, bring people back, I'd like to start bringing that in.
It's been a conversation that we've had at our, our weekly admin meetings, who kind of talk about that, looking at a forecast for the fall. So we are definitely, um, in communication with teachers every week and families every week. So we will keep you posted as things come up, come to us.
And even the philosophy of how we're going to keep the school clean. I mean, we've struggled, we've struggled in the past and we definitely can't struggle anymore.
On a positive note-
Mr. Cook?
On a positive note, anything for the, for the light on in the field?
I'm sorry, Chris, can I just repeat that?
A positive note, like, the lights on in the field for the support for Friday night? So nice touch.
Yes, Mr. Okey's done a nice job organizing the hall.
And a great job keeping up the food service and the delivery.
Yes, Laura is doing a fantastic job with her speaker.
Anything further, Chris?
I better stop her.
All right, uh, we'll move on to Mr. Cook.
Nothing other than stay safe. Do what you're supposed to do to keep yourself safe and your family safe.
All right, uh, Mrs. O'Connor?
I'm all set, thank you.
Mrs. Bobstein?
I'm all set, thank you.
And Mrs. Durst?
Um, I want to echo, uh, everyone else's sentiment, please stay safe. Um, I did lose my brother-in-law on Saturday night. Uh, he's from Lennox Township, so it's in our area. Everyone take care.
Sorry for the-
Very sorry for your loss.
Thank you, thank you.
So, yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot of people.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay, with that, um, you know, I'll just, uh, make some closing comments here. I'm, uh, looking really forward to when we can all meet together again in a boardroom. Um, although there may be different, uh, different guidelines we have to follow, but I look forward to that. Um, this is not easy on everyone to conduct a meeting over the phone, although I think, um, uh, we're getting better at it. I think the meeting went well today, um, over the, over the telephone. Um, as well, I'm looking forward to us, uh, getting back to our strategic planning and, and district goals and, um, moving forward with that plan in the near future. I believe that's ready, we're just, uh,
Are you?
waiting, um, to pull that together when we can get, um, you know, a lot of the community, that was a good part of that, um, together to work through that. So, um, provided, um, you know, this situation ends soon, hopefully we can get that going here really quick. If not, we may have to discuss, um, uh, other means of, of getting that moving. Um, I am very appreciative of what the staff and, uh, and administration has done, um, really responding well to this. It seemed like right from the beginning, they're already starting to, to brainstorm ideas, um, ways to support, um, students that needed extra support. And, um, definitely, um, you know, the emails or the, the phone calls, um, from administration as well, um, reaching out and, and, um, and the, and the teachers as well, you know, definitely, um, making themselves available to help out and stay in touch with the students. With that, uh, is there any other further board comment?
Make a motion to close. Keep them to it, support.
We have motion to adjourn at 12:18 PM by Mr. Cook, supported by Mr. Parry.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Parry?
Yes.
Mrs. McHugh?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Bobstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Durst?
Yes.
All right, we have a unanimous, uh, roll call to adjourn the meeting at 12:18. Thank you for, thank you, everyone. Stay safe. Good night.
Good night.